Please be ready and unmute yourself, so I'm not the only one saying it, please and thank you. I'd like to call the meeting, the virtual meeting of February 11th. To order, it is 6:32 PM. If you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Okay, well, first, I'd like to thank everybody for joining us. We have a busy meeting this evening. So we'll get started with additions to the agenda. Do we have any new additions to the agenda at this time?
No.
Okay, then I need to, I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. I'll move.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of January 14th, regular meeting.
I'll move.
Second?
A second.
I have a quick discussion item on that.
I was just asked, any discussion? Go ahead Travis.
Yeah, it's a little nitpick thing, but I think it's important. In the minutes, 6.3, the recapping the annual review of certain policies. In these minutes, it says, "Going forward, the Policy Committee will review the following policies and share with the Board at their annual June Board Meeting." I went over the video, it's not quite what we agreed upon. I, if you guys are okay with it, I'd like to ask we amend it to say, "Going forward, the Policy Committee will discuss this and make their recommendation to the Board at a future Board Meeting." Because that's basically what we agreed upon.
Is everybody okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Debbie, do you need that language sent to you, or do you have?
No, there wasn't any motion in 6.3, it was only a discussion. So basically, what do you want Travis?
Instead of the last sentence, change it to, "Going forward, the Policy Committee will discuss this and make their recommendation to the Board at a future meeting."
Okay, now, I was under the impression that you were going to discuss it in June and then approve everything at the July reorg meeting. Is that still not, is that how it's going to work?
No, in the meeting, we said, I asked the question, "As a policy meeting, as a Policy Committee, we'll talk about this, make our suggestions, and at a future Board Meeting, we'll figure out what to do." Michelle said, "That's how I feel," and Jen said, "Yes," so that's kind of how I took, and that has happened too, so. It's a little thing, I just, if we can change that, it'd be great, if not, whatever.
So going forward, the Policy Committee will discuss?
And make their recommendation to the Board at a future Board Meeting.
Future Board, yeah, future Board Meeting, okay.
Thank you Debbie.
You're welcome.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor of amending the minutes of the January 14th meeting?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Before we go to the consent agenda, I just want to throw out a reminder to all that are watching. Please use the chap in the YouTube link at any time throughout the meeting, and we will get to your comments during one of the two public participation periods. You don't have to wait till that time to put something in. And then a motion to approve the following consent agenda as recommended by the Superintendent. It is 3.1 through 4.3. Motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I just wanted to, sorry, I'm going to jump in Ellen. I'm going to, I just wanted to say that the 4.1 is regarding the school calendar to reflect Juneteenth as a state holiday, so that day will be a day off of school. And that was in there, so.
Yeah, I just, so that doesn't affect the length of the school year or anything by adding an additional day off?
No, the calendar is all set, and it's during Regents Week this year, so the state readjusted the Regents.
Okay. Anything else on the other consent agenda items? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That brings us to 5.1, which is our student participation. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Helfon and go from there. So Dr. Helfon, it's all you.
Hi, thank you for welcoming us. I'm the advisor of the Hamilton Central State Tech Club, and we've brought in here all four teams that have participated with the BBB Video Competition. And I wanted to just briefly explain what this competition is about before I hand it over to each individual teams and their representatives to explain their videos and to actually give you an opportunity to see these one-minute clips. So I was asked to become the Tech Club Advisor a little over a year ago, and sometime a year ago in December, I think Mr. Arquette slipped a flyer in my mailbox, which was about the BBB Video Competition, and it had never been done before. And I was very interested, and I really wanted the members of the Tech Club to participate, so we did last year. And we did very well, a team of four. You might remember, it was Addison Schoolmaker, Enri Cresby, Sky and Aiden Helfon, and they placed second place. Back then, the theme of the video was, "Start with Trust." So this year, the video competition happened again with the Better Business Bureau, and with obviously the pandemic going on, they changed their theme to "Building Trust During Trying Times." And we've had an amazing turnout. It started already in the fall with lots of students joining in, as is evident from how many student faces you're seeing here today. And four teams actually pushed it through and came up with four videos. And I would like to start off with our first video, which was done by, and they're going to introduce themselves, but I'm going to hand it over to Evan Sharpallinger, and he's going to tell them first about their video, who his team members are, and then Mr. Rogers will actually allow us to see the video. Go for it Evan.
Something me, Elijah Myers, Owen Hay, and William Shinnard thought would be important to include in our video was the relatability of the Better Business Bureau to consumers, and we thought the best way to express this was by showing humor while also being able to clearly insufficiently explain the purpose of the Better Business Bureau.
Okay, now I'm going to show the video, right? Yes, okay. Bear with me, I have to share my screen here. Okay, can everybody see that? And we are doing this one.
What you have just witnessed is very surprising. This young man just wanted a banana, but instead got corn. Businesses abuse their privileges all the time, but now, they're going to pay the debt. The businesses are scamming their customers more than ever. The BBB can fix that. The BBB is a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping you not get sick. Just go to BBB.org and see if your favorite business has BBB credit. Also, check for the BBB accreditation seal next time you walk into a new business and make sure you can trust them. Trust the Better Business Bureau.
So, did that come as an echo at all to other people? Or did it come out perfectly?
It was a little choppy.
Yeah, I'm sure there was a little bit of an echo.
And I'm wondering, Evan has some really good advice for me as we were watching each other's videos and critiquing each other's work as we were going through our drafts, to maybe just show it as a tab? Is that what you said Evan? Any advice on how it could be done better so that the next three will sound a little bit better? As opposed to presenting your screen, present just the tab and then mute?
That's what I'm doing, but I will, I'll try to tweak it.
Okay, thank you so much. Our second video is going to be, is it Bergen that's going to talk about the second team?
Going to be me.
It's going to be Ben, awesome Ben P, so go for it Ben.
Okay, so I'm Ben Pollock, I'm a senior, and my group was the Hamilton Hooligans, which featured Koi Gilchrist, Bergen Linden, and Aiden Helfon. So everyone in my group has been making videos from us to high school, and some of us even in middle school before Tech Club was a thing. And humor has always been like at the center of all of our videos, and we wanted to do that with this one as well. So we decided to center this project around a fraudulent mask business, because we knew that buying and wearing masks is really relatable for everyone right now. But we also knew it was kind of a quirky topic that we could put our own humor into it, so I hope you guys enjoy.
All right, so our third video was done by seventh grade middle school girls, and I do want to mention this, that officially, this competition was actually meant for high schoolers. But when I saw these girls join in with the Tech Club, I basically asked special permission to allow them to also submit their work, and they were very open about this at the BBB Bureau. So without further ado, I'm going to have, is it Sophia that's going to introduce, or is it Sarah or Lily?
I'm going to talk.
Go for it Sophia.
Okay, so I'm Sophia Juarez, and my team members are Sarah Klingeman and Liliana Hagos. And we're in seventh grade, and our video is an animation that we, which we tried to follow the team of the contest, which is "Trust in Trying Times." So we came up with a problem that we thought was relatable with online shopping, and we showed how the BBB can solve it.
Remember those boots you always wanted to get? But you didn't know which company to buy them from, because you couldn't figure out which made better quality boots? Well, the Better Business Bureau has got you covered in these trying times. All you have to do is go to BBB.org to find a business you can trust. The BBB is an organization that verifies businesses with trustworthy reviews. This makes sure everyday businesses you use are trustworthy and don't commit business fraud. This saves you time and money. On top of this, the BBB is a nonprofit organization with reviews by real people, making these reviews more accurate and relatable. With the BBB, you only have to use the businesses you trust. Now you can get those boots you wanted quickly and easily. Not having to worry about if you'll get scammed or get bad boots, and instead get the quality you deserve. Better Business Bureau, building trust in trying times.
Okay, so that was our third out of four videos, and our last video is by Sky Helfon. He's going to talk a little bit about this work.
Yeah, so I'm Sky Helfon, and I'm also a senior, and for my video, I also made animation. And I really wanted to highlight how important trust is by showing cavemen making a trade. So it'd be like, since the dawn of time, trust has been an integral part of our society. And now, more than ever, we need to make sure we're making good decisions with who we do trade with, so that's why it's related to that.
Since the dawn of time, humans have engaged in all sorts of trade, but finding that trustworthy business can be difficult. As a consumer, you need to know if a business is operating with good intentions or leaving you in the dark. As times change, while items on the market may be swapped in and out, the need for trust remains always prevalent. Whether it be for sticks and stones or a new watch, when you do business, you need trust. The Better Business Bureau is a nonprofit organization with the mission to help you find businesses you can trust. For more than 100 years, the BBB has strived to ensure businesses are operating with honesty, integrity, and good intention. To find a trustworthy business, simply go to BBB.org. There, just search for the type of job you're looking for, type in your location, and hundreds of trustworthy businesses will pop up instantly. Building trust in these trying times has never been more vital. Start with trust. Go to BBB.org today.
Okay, so that concludes our four videos, and I want to just end in saying that this two-week period, it actually ends on Valentine's Day, Sunday, is the voting period, and Mr. Rogers will put up a link for any parents, staff, teachers, any community members to click on that link, and then you could either choose or vote for all of them, and you vote by clicking on the heart. That should take another vote in there. But the selection process is really not just based on voting. The majority of it is based on jurors actually selecting for what the best video is, and I was told that these jurors are actually business owners, local business owners, that of course have the BBB seal. And the winners will be announced the Monday after winter break, Monday, February 22nd. And these are big prizes to be had. We're talking the first prize, $1,500 for technology film-type equipment for the school, and $1,000 cash prize for the team members to be shared. And there's a second and a third prize, too, just a little bit less in monetary value. So thank you very much for your time. I know this is a busy meeting, so I don't want to take up more of your time, but thank you.
I'd like to thank you for being the overseer of these wonderful students, and to all you students that are on tonight. Thank you. You should be very, very proud of yourselves. I know, just looking at the faces on the screen right now, that we are all very proud of you, the work that you've put in, and the ability to get on this meeting and be a part of our Board Meeting, and we're grateful for your time, and we wish you luck, and can't wait to hear after break how it works out.
Great job everybody.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
My screen just got much smaller. They did a wonderful job presenting. The next item on our agenda is our capital project update, so I will turn it over to Matt, and we'll go from there.
Thank you Michelle. Happy to have what's now, should be a familiar face to our meetings and our community, Paul Johnson from King &amp; King Architects. Paul's very familiar with our district, has done a lot of work here. Last meeting, I think it may have been Ellen, had asked sort of for an update on a couple of things. Number one was what was accomplished in Phase 1, and then I believe Travis, you know, had some questions about the proposed budget for Phase 3, and sort of the methodology that goes into the budgeting and some of the figures, so. Paul was kind enough to join us. I believe Paul's going to give a quick rundown of what was originally planned in Phase 1, what we were able to accomplish, and then also sort of the process on where we landed with these three moving forward, so. We'll turn it over to Paul, welcome Paul.
Great, thank you. You know, I just, on my side screen here, I was just looking up King &amp; King Architects at the BBB. We're not listed actually, not sure what's going on with that. All right, so last project, just some of the high-level items that were part of the project. A key piece, again, was replacing the heating system, that was everything from the steam boilers. At that time, we were able to convert them to natural gas, since natural gas had been run to the building a few years prior. Again, these were high-efficiency condensing boilers, so very good from an energy standpoint. As part of that conversion, we also replaced a large portion of the old steam system in the building, and that was mainly the high school and middle school wing of the building, and a little bit into the district office area. So again, that's converting from steam to hot water, and that included all the ventilation equipment, so what that looks like if you walk into a classroom, it's essentially the unit ventilator on the, below the window on the outside wall, and all the piping and everything that helped control that. With that, we actually went from a very traditional unit ventilator to a, what's called the vertical unit ventilator. What that also, what was able to do for the district was to provide better air movement and ventilation and distribution of fresh air within the room by running it through ductwork above the ceiling and dispersing it better around the room versus trying to, if you remember the old ones that sit under the window, it just blows and you hope that maybe it makes it partway across the room. And so that, again, from a health standpoint is a big improvement, it's a huge improvement from an acoustical standpoint in lower fan speeds and being able to hear in rooms better, which obviously has a direct impact on everyone's ability to communicate and hear and learn. Some of that equipment replacement also addressed the gym, the auditorium, the main office, and the industrial arts area. Also tied to that work was upgrades to the actual control system, so that you went from a very archaic system that was pneumatic-based to the computer age. And now you actually have a system throughout the building that can be controlled from a computer, or actually, I think someone can control it even remotely now, and so just better control and better alerting of any issues ahead of time for the maintenance staff and the building administration. Again, tied to all that is just the electrical and architectural work needed to help all that happen, so you can imagine all the ceilings that had to come down to allow that work, the electrical upgrades to disconnect and reconnect equipment. And then finally, the other big thrust was the roof, and so you can remember in the past, we talked about, I think people told some stories of of parents' nights and having buckets of water distributed around the building as the roof was leaking like a sieve in areas, and so the original portion of the project was to, or the original Phase 1 was to do the worst about, we estimated 55% to 60% of the roof would fit in the original budget, being conservative. And so the goal was to sort of address those worst areas first, and then to address the rest of the roof as part of Phase 2. Getting into our, the budget portion of the conversation, the entire roof was actually able to be replaced as part of Phase 1, and so again, that allowed, because everything came in under budget, it allowed work to happen a year sooner. If not for that, the district would still have, at least 40% of the roof would be the old roof, and that would not have been replaced until this coming summer. So that was what was, those are the, those are the high-level items that were accomplished in Phase 1. Some other things that were able to be added on as we went are things like the digital sign out front. We were able to replace the rest of the non-acoustical-type ceiling tiles that were in many of the hallways and made the hallway, hallways very echoey. If any of you were in the, remember that from the building now, it's a lot better acoustically throughout the building. And I don't know, I don't know if I'm missing anything else, big Matt, those are the key ones, so. I want to now quickly share my screen. All right, can everyone see that? Okay. So I just wanted to quickly go through how we come up with a budget, what the intent of a budget is, and sort of the key pieces. So the intent of the original budget is to help the district establish a cost that ultimately the voters vote on prior to a public vote for a project. These budgets are purposefully conservative, and they have a lot of safety factors built into them. The point is to ensure that the district can actually afford all the work that the voters have voted on. So really, the worst thing that we could do is to estimate it really tight, have something happen like happened recently, where there are labor shortages, et cetera, and have prices spike, and then put the district in a position where you would not be able to accomplish everything that the voters had approved and expected to move forward. So again, budgets are intentionally conservative, they're there to protect the district. Again, I see, I say going over budget is not an option. We have had votes go over budget in the past, and what that then requires is either the scope of work has to be pared down, it requires an additional referendum, either for more money or a modified scope of work. As you can imagine, that takes time, you would have to rebid the project, and then there's months of delays and when construction can start, and so obviously there's cost impacts related to all of that, so really, the number one goal of budgeting is to avoid having to go through that, so. How budgets are built, we start how budgets are built, we start out with a construction estimate that we do ourselves for the work being proposed. Now you have to remember that all those items that I just talked about, we had a assigned cost to before ever doing any design work. So the state education department doesn't allow us to do design work without an approved voter referendum in place. So we really have to work off of inherent knowledge and historical cost figures and you know, just our, what we're used to doing with estimating to come up with a baseline construction cost number. Also remember that number with this project in particular was those estimates were being done early in the spring, I think of 2018 before your public vote. So we have to then add, because one, we don't know a lot of what could be discovered in the walls. We're not able to do a lot of investigative work. Without an approved referendum, the district's not going to want to pay us to do a bunch of investigations when you don't know that you're going to have the funding in place. So we add a twenty percent design contingency and that's really there to again, add that safety factor and to cover the, all the what ifs. And even on our project, there were still some of those items that I may have talked to you about in the past. And an obvious one was when they removed all the ceilings. The walls, the walls not go all the way up to the roof deck. And so we had to seal that to provide proper fire rating. And so there's always, that's normal. There's always things that are discovered during construction. And that design contingency is there to help cover both what we don't know in the beginning and then even what is found during construction. On top of that, there's a twenty percent incidental budget. We have found that historically twenty percent is a good number. That is all your soft, what's called soft costs. It's everything from printing to legal fees to all the costs related to your financing, et cetera. All of that goes into the design fees. All of that's under your incidental budget. And then finally, again, as I mentioned, we have to come up with these numbers long before you're going to do construction. So we have to factor in some level of inflation, which can vary, you know, in typical year, that's three to five percent. In some years, fairly recently, we saw numbers that were double digits and astounding, honestly, and no one could have predicted some of those. So that's, that's sort of the thought process and the methodology that goes into building a budget. The next slide that I have here. Wanted to attempt to go back and look at the budget that we came up with versus the actual results that you got on bid day and just to give you a side by side comparison. And the best that I could, I tried to make this an apples to apples comparison, though they're really two different items. One, our budget is to establish an overall number that you would work within while the bid results are really a competitive scenario. And so there's obviously going to be differences in these numbers. So again, conceptual budget for phase one again, was five point seven million. When you add all those, the inflation and everything I talked about, you get to about nine point one million. The actual phase one project, fiscal advisors had targeted as seven point five. We had all discussed as a team to design extra roofing work into this with the hopes that either you would get better numbers and could accept more work. Or the other strategy was that you could award work. You could award the work a year before it would happen, but you would get better pricing. Because they would, you would basically cut out a year of inflation and contractor markups. So again, that's where this gets a little tricky trying to do a side by side because there's so many variables in here. But this is what I boiled it down to. So anyways, a phase one budget of nine point one million. On bid day, we got all the prime contractors bids added up to five point seven million. Again, as a safety factor, we always carry a construction contingency, again, for those discovered conditions, et cetera. So that gets you to a construction total of six point two million. And then again, that incidental budget is always just a placeholder for what expenses we know the district will have. So in the end, the actual phase one project total on bid day came in at roughly seven point four million. So again, we're below the target of seven point five. And we were able to include the entire roof in phase two because numbers came in so well. And so again, that was critical to the district in the fact that additional work was able to be accomplished. It was done at, you know, when we were able to competitively bid the numbers that came in at a great price. And again, was able to move important work ahead faster. So let me just pause there and ask, am I on the right? Am I answering the questions that were asked originally or start firing away at me here?
Yes, this is helpful.
Okay, good. I don't want to just keep rambling on here.
Paul, if I could jump in and add one thing, another key component to this is the finances. And at the same time, when we are in initial stages of planning with fiscal advisors, working together with the design team and also looking at finances. They are also very conservative in their estimates, looking down the road in terms of interest rates and costs of borrowing and such. So they are also conservative in that sense. So ultimately, what ended up happening was with favorable bidding and with favorable borrowing, a favorable borrowing environment, we were basically able to eliminate phase two and increase the amount of work done in phase one while still sticking to the plan is financially that the whole premise of the project was sold on in terms of the impact on the tax levy. So you know, if we could get all this work done, done ahead of time, but it would cause a big spike in the tax levy, that's certainly not something we can do. So like Paul said, there's a lot of variables. So but ultimately what happened was because of the favorable conditions fiscally and the favorable bid results, we were basically able to complete the first two phases all in phase one. And that's why we really don't have much of a phase two because of the finances. And then the rest of the work will be done in phase three. So.
I just want to remind you.
That's what I was, that's what I thought was happening, but that was the piece when I, you know, what did we originally plan? And it was sort of like, what happened to phase two? And so it did all get done in phase one.
Right. And phase two was, the bulk of phase two was the remainder of the roof. So the initial plan to meet, meet the, our requests fiscally was to do roughly half the roof in phase one, half the roof in phase two. And we are very thrilled to have been able to complete that all in phase one. I think it's, it just made for a much better transition. So.
Right. There, there's so many, there's so many reasons why that was a benefit to the district even beyond the finances, just having one contractor do the work all at one time, the same crew. There, there's a lot of positives, all the same roof. Otherwise, you could potentially had two different manufacturers, two different warranties. So really happy with how this all worked out. And then ultimately, I just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, all the money that is being spent through this project is following municipal bid laws, that, that everything is bid, that all expenses come back to the Board of Education through awarding contracts and all. And so there's, the state has many procedures in place to ensure that that, that things are being competitively bid and that you're getting the best results, that then the contractors you're getting are also vetted and that they're, they're bonded properly. And so there's many, many layers of protection for the district from a financial standpoint and from a craftsmanship and constructability standpoint.
Paul, thank you for doing that presentation. The budget piece was very helpful. I just have one question, and if it's not really a good question for you, I apologize. Matt can answer it for us later. What is Wicks Law? What do I need to know about it? And how does it affect cost of a project?
Oh, excellent. So the Wicks Law, it essentially requires any public work to particularly mechanical, electrical and plumbing. And if it's over, I think the threshold now is five hundred thousand dollars. If any work is over five hundred thousand dollars, you need to have a separate prime contractor for each one of those trades. So what it does is it, it, it creates the scenario where we have projects with five and six prime contractors. Yeah, in public work, while in the private world, private sector, they would have one prime contractor and everyone else would be a subcontractor to him. It makes it easier for owners because they have one guy to deal with. And he deals with everyone else while school districts have five prime contractors, six prime contractors. And it's the owner's requirement or the owner's, it's on the owner to coordinate all that work and get all of them to work together. And that's where you have clerks that works and construction managers and architects all sort of help you in that process of dealing with all these extra contractors that you have to, that all have a prime contract with you. So.
Does it make accountability of work harder?
It can. It makes the coordination of work harder because, as you can imagine, everyone's working in the same, same area on the same items. And so it's the coordination of those items that is, is more difficult. But you know, with, with a good team, and we had a great team on, on phase one, both contractors, your construction manager that, you know, everyone works together as a team. And that's really the goal is to is to get everyone to understand that all of our successes are integrally linked and that we need to work together and that it can't if there is someone not pulling their weight, you know, that, that they've got to step it up and, but we just can't get into a point where it's a whole bunch of finger pointing and accusing each other. It's got to be solutions based and people need to be, if something doesn't fit, we need to be able to talk about it. And so that's why we have a lot of meetings, a lot of construction oversight during during the project itself to, to just make sure everyone continues to work in the same direction.
Perfect. Thank you for explaining that to me.
Sure. But I, you know, it does add, all these, all these things end up adding costs to the project. So everything from prevailing wage rates to the Wicks Law to well, I'll just stop with those two. But they, they definitely add costs. So you know, sometimes I'll get questions when people see the breakdown of our estimates and they'll, they'll say, why does a water heater cost twelve thousand dollars? I can go to Home Depot right now and pick one up for, you know, a tenth of that. It's all these additional layers of state requirements and insurance requirements, et cetera, et cetera, that just compound the cost.
Yeah. That right there really answered a question I had last month. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul? If not, we'll, we'll move on. I, I I want to thank Paul for taking his time out this evening. He does answer these questions so eloquently. And I know he's accustomed to coming to meetings like this. So we're, we're happy to have him. And certainly if there's anything else that should come up related to past project or future projects, I'm sure Paul would be happy to jump in again if needed. So.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That was very good. We do have public participation up next. So far, there is nothing in the chat box and YouTube chat. If you do have anything, please post it there now. And with the delay, I will wait a couple extra minutes just to make sure. As a reminder, you can write anytime and we will get to the questions at the next participation if it's after this one. All right. I still don't see anything, so we will move on. New, new business is up next. So we will turn it over to Ms. Reynolds and we will talk about return to play in-house sports. It's a presentation and then followed by a discussion and a possible action. So Lauren, it's all you.
Thank you. So I'm just going to present, I put a little presentation together to explain everything a little bit more thoroughly and take the bigger points from my plan. Okay. So this plan is very similar to our fall plan, but it's specific to higher sports. So I just wanted to clarify about what high risk sports are. So the New York State Department of Health states that high risk boards are characterized by the least ability to maintain physical distance or it can be done individually and the least ability to avoid touching shared equipment, clean and disinfect equipment between uses by different individuals or not use shared equipment at all. So the high risk sports that we offer at ECF are football, when we combine with water bottles in fall, too. Wrestling, which is a combination with Morrisville, ice hockey, which we have a combination with Casanova. And then in-house, we have boys and girls basketball and then girls volleyball. And those are all classified as high risk sports. As stated in the interim guidance for sports and recreation during the COVID-19 public health emergency by the New York State Department of Health. So they rank higher sports and the risks associated with higher risk sports. So it starts with individual or distance group training or activities. So basketball, shooting drills, and then it goes down a tier and in risk level and becomes organized to no or low contact group training. Then competitive team practices, games, and then tournaments. So the reason I bring this up is because I'm going to talk about a phase approach in a little bit, but we're currently, we have been holding basketball open gym sessions since October, which were organized in the first type of play, which is the individual or distance group training or activity. So they've been doing a lot of skill-based drills, a lot of shooting. They have not shared a ball until recently, which I'll explain. But they've been doing this successfully since October, following many of the guidelines in the state. So I just want to go over a timeline as well. On January twenty-second, Governor Cuomo announced the allowance to higher sports, pending the decision by each county department of health. The R County Department of Health released guidance on January twenty-eighth. A large guidance document with information as to how to proceed, but ultimately they recommended that no risk, high risk boards be played interscholastically at this time. We've upheld that decision while still allowing our open gym sessions to continue. And the Madison County Department of Health plans to evaluate the decision in a month as per their press release. So in order to proceed to further phases of play, so further pass that individual activity, Madison County outlined in their plan that each school had to develop a reopening plan submitted to the, our school's medical director as well as have it be approved by the board, our Board of Education. So this plan serves, also serves as a guideline that the Madison County Department of Health reevaluates and reverses their initial decision. So we would have that in place already. So I'm going to go over some of the, the protocol, which largely was pulled from Madison County Department of Health document. So this slide is really similar to what I had in the fall. Our general guidelines are the same. Students can participate if they're remote. Any coach or athlete must be symptom-free. And members of their health holds must be symptom-free as well. Any athletes and coaches cannot participate if they've been exposed within ten days. So that's a change only because of the, the changes with the CDC have recommended ten days instead. And then any athlete who tests positive for COVID-19 within fourteen days must notify the coach and then the athletic director and then the district. Again, we're keeping teams and practices to essential personnel, which will only be coaches and athletes in the roster. We have plenty of hand sanitizer available. Equipment will be standardized throughout. No shared towels, water bottles, clothing or shoes. And then we're encouraging that individuals wash clothes and towels after each practice or game. So this is a phase approach that I was talking about. I actually worked with a lot of other Madison County schools and a lot of them are instituting a similar approach. When we developed their plan, so they're, they're all really similar. So we're currently in phase one, which is the programs will begin practices of limited activities and practices concentrated on skills, drills, conditioning and learning systems. So they've been doing that, like I said, since October, utilizing that shooting So they've been doing that, like I said, since October, utilizing that shooting machine a lot. And our coaches have been really creative in finding ways to get our athletes engaged without being able to pass the ball. So that's been, I'm very proud of them for doing that. It took a lot of work for them to get our kids engaged because it's not easy when you can't pass the ball. So now we're looking out to phase two, which is what I'm proposing with this plan. This goes into the next tier of the risk level. So we'd be able to pass ball, a pop ball a little bit more. It doesn't fully go into in-house scrimmages yet. That would be phase three, but it's, it's more game-like drills. So in the event of basketball would be like a three-on-two drill. So it's not all the way five-on-five. You're still limiting the number of people in the court, limiting the number of people who are touching it, but it's still a little bit riskier than the individualized practice. And then phase three would be in-house scrimmages. And then if the, if the recommendation of the Board of Health and our direct district's medical director is that the schools are okay to move forward with interscholastic play. It would be recommended to the school board that a resumption to full season play will possibly culminate with competition through winter sports at home and away within our county only. So I'm currently, like I said, working with other county schools. In the event that the Board of Health reverses their decision to come up with tentative schedules, very tentative schedules, to try to play interscholastic games against schools only in our, in our county. So the practice guidelines are similar. We always screen our athletes prior to practice, even if they've been in the building, they still get screened and logged into our system. Practices are limited to paid coaches and athletes, so we're not going to have any team managers or volunteer coaches. Coaches must wear masks for the duration of practice. Players must wear masks except during specified mask breaks determined by the coach, in which they're socially distanced from other individuals. If there's times where a player needs an additional mask break, we just ask that they either step outside the gym or they find a space where they're sufficiently apart from other people. Obviously with basketball, the people can get winded a little bit quicker. So if they need additional mask breaks, that's fine, just as long as they're socially distanced. We're asking that coaches sanitize equipment periodically throughout the practice, preferably between drills. And then because we're inside, the practices are going to be organized into pods, pods based on sizes. So they're, based on the numbers that we have right now, there's three pods. Girls' basketball is about 20 girls. That's varsity and JV. So they're able to be held in one pod. JV boys' basketball and varsity boys' basketball have to be broken up into two pods because they're about, they're at 30, if not more. They'll be broken up into a pod of JV's boys' basketball and a pod of varsity boys' basketball. And this is kind of a staggered practice schedule that I have. Right now, we currently only have a full elementary gym, but we do have half the high school gym. So they've been utilizing, utilizing that as a warm-up period. So this is obvious, this is very tentative and can be changed at any time, but this is kind of how we've been operating. From three to five is girls' basketball and then a 15-minute window to wipe down surfaces. While at the same time, the boys, JV boys' basketball team is warming up in the high school gym. And then the boys, JV boys' basketball team comes in from 5:15 to 7 o'clock. Then as, as they're wrapping up, the varsity boys' basketball team can warm up in the high school gym and then come into the elementary gym from seven to seven, uh, from 7:15 to 9:00 PM. And it's the responsibility of the coach of the previous session to wipe down the surface. So for instance, at the end of the girls' basketball practice, Coach LaPage or Coach Hampton will wipe down. At the end of the JV boys' basketball, Coach Snyder, and the end of varsity boys' basketball, Coach Walker would wipe it down. Still some game guidelines similar to what we saw in the fall. So all athletes must be screened prior to games by school personnel. Site personnel must document every person who attends the game. Coaches wear masks for the duration of the game. Players will wear masks for the duration of the game, unless during specified mask breaks for their socially distance. And officials will sanitize equipment periodically throughout the contest. Additionally to this, the benches will be separated. So you'd have to have a six-foot space between. So if you've watched any NCAA games or any college game or any professional games rather, you see how the staggered bench. So that's kind of what I'm anticipating either on the bleacher or utilizing our chairs to, to not have a traditional bench where they're all sitting because it'd be really difficult. There would have to be a staggered approach to maintain the six feet distance between them. Transportation, if we allow interscholastic sports, would stay to the 22 students per bus. And then we encourage parents and guardians to transport them. Madison County Department of Health and me as well, we're not recommending carpooling, but that was specifically in Madison County Department of Health documents. If they, they do not recommend carpooling, and I believe it was, it was in the state document as well. If they are taking the bus, athletes, coaches, coaches and bus drivers will wear masks. And then a distance or remote learners will be responsible for their own transportation to school for practices after game. So spectators, even though Governor Cuomo has allowed two spectators per athlete, at this time, we are not recommending spectators be allowed in the building for in-house scrimmages or interscholastic competition. This is not just a district decision. A lot of the schools in our county are following similar suit and even within our league. At this moment, we're kind of breaking off into counties, so I'm not even operating under like the center state as much. But prior to that, almost all the center state schools were not going to allow spectators. And all of the Madison County schools that I were talking to, have been talked to, are not allowing spectators with potentially the exception of a senior night if we were to have it. So with that being said, if games are played, I'm going to be live streaming them with a better system than I did in the fall. I've already spoken to Mr. Rogers and Mr. Larson and they've found a system that would work best, that would work with our current equipment. It would just be an attachment to it. And I've spoken to the boosters and they would be willing to purchase that equipment for us if we were to be playing games. So that's already lined up. If the event that Madison County, County Department of Health changes their decision, I have the ability to livestream at any time. Positive COVID-19 tests, this is the same as it was in the fall. In the event that there's positive cases on the team, we're going to work with Madison County Department of Health to determine which students, coaches and spectators, which wouldn't be spectators, must quarantine. And then any athlete who tests positive will have to be cleared by a physician as well as their school nurse in order to return to sports during the period in which they are not cleared, they're unable to attend practices, games or meetings. And school and sports and games can be suspended or canceled anytime due to increased cases within our district, but also among opposing districts and teams. The Madison County Department of Health in their document had additional coaching requirements. And one of them was a course through Johns Hopkins, which actually Mr. LaPage and I took today. And it's all about contact tracing and it talks about, it just gives you a more in-depth understanding of how contact tracing would occur and it gives you more information about COVID-19 while you're taking it. So we actually completed that today, but all coaches would have to complete that before and during phase two. Additional player requirements, again, the Madison County Department of Health in their document said that each district slash school obtains a medical clearance from the student-athlete's healthcare provider. A physical is not required to be performed as part of this medical clearance, but can be done if indicated by their healthcare provider. So they don't necessarily have to go in and get a new physical. From what I'm hearing from other districts who have already begun this process, they simply need to call their physician and say, I need a medical clearance. And some of them will write that for them if they've seen them within a certain amount of time. If they haven't been seen in a long period of time, they, the physician may require them to come in. But I'm not, this is all it says in the, in, in the document regarding that. There's no specific format that the clearance needs to be in. So written clearance granted by students, personal physician is acceptable and then is needed before entering phase two. And so they should be collected and filed in the nurse's office. Again, in the Madison County Department of Health guidance, they, they asked that each plan had a clause where somebody could express concern about any COVID-19 safety protocols that weren't being held. So we're utilizing our laptop app that we already have in, in place. So if a player, coach or family member feels that an individual or team is violating any of the protocols that I've mentioned or that's outlined even more thoroughly in my document, the individual is encouraged, is encouraged to utilize the confidential reporting software, which goes directly to the administration and that it, we will be investigating, taking it seriously. And that app can be accessed via the HCS website. And the final thing I just wanted to put on is the calendar because it's been up in the air really because we, it's been very fluid about how everything has been. So the winter season technically started February 1st with Governor Cuomo's announcement, but we're really not starting till February 8th probably would be, would have been like an actual time for us to count practices. And the section has set the end date as March 13th. Fall two starts May 1st, so there's a two-week overlap, but it, and fall two goes to April 30th. In that two-week overlap, students can be dual-sport athletes.
Lauren.
Yes?
That's March 1st, not May 1st. Yes?
Oh, yes. Sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm thinking better weather for fall two, I guess. So March 1st to April 30th and then spring is April 19th to June 30th. So the section's extended the spring to June 30th. That's still up in the air and pending. They're anticipating, that's not, so there, there's been talk about shortening that as well because of fear of graduation conflicts and things like that. But that's the tentative dates that are set. And that is all that I have in, in regards to the reopening plan.
Thank you, Lauren. Ellen, you unmuted first, so I assume you have some questions.
Can I just add one thing before we start? So in, in our Department of Health call today with all the Madison County superintendents, we were notified that the, the Board of Health is going to reconvene next week and reassess their recommendation. So they're not going to wait for a month. They are going to meet next week and, and discuss their, the recommendation and come up with either, they're either going to sustain the recommendation or make a new recommendation at that time.
Yeah, no, I was just going to ask, it sounds to me, Lauren, from your discussion, like schools are starting a little more in the same place this time. As opposed to last time, it felt like we were in one place and a lot of other schools were in a different place. The way you're describing it now, it sounds like there's a little more common ground. Is that accurate?
Yes. I think now that I'm, that we're completely aligned with Madison County schools as, because of the high-risk sports that we have to operate under the same guidelines, we're aligned with schools that have similar values to us. And so we created the plans together. I worked closely with Casanova, Canastota, Morrisville, Sherburne technically and not Madison County, but was given grant an allowance to be part of it since they're right next to us. Chit Nango, Oneida and one more that I'm forgetting. But, so we worked all together and our plans are very, very similar to each other and we have the same guideline.
Okay. Stockbridge. Is it Stockbridge?
Stockbridge wasn't part of our conversations, but we're reaching out to Stockbridge and Madison at this point.
Okay. I'm trying to remember who else you would be missing.
So my question is, looking at this phase two that we're hoping to get into, that would involve then combined sports practicing in that, is that correct?
Yes. So there would be practicing in combined sports as well.
So could you explain a, a little bit more about how that would work in terms of, how does saying we, we won't allow interscholastic competition, but we will allow some combined sports? How does that, how do we ensure that there's still some, you know, how is that safer? I guess is how are we making sure that there's still a level of safety that's beyond? I think a lot of people might say, well, if you're doing combined sports with two different districts already, couldn't you just do interscholastic sports with those two districts at least? Could you explain a little bit more about how that goes? And then I guess the second part to that question is, what are the, what are we doing to ensure compliance from other districts? And that's maybe more of a question for Bill is, is how are we communicating with those other districts to ensure that there's compliance on their end where we, we have, you know, obviously the ability to observe and to, to train our own coaches? How are we doing that? How are we ensuring that with the, with the other districts?
So I'll tackle the compliance question, Corey. All the Madison County superintendents charged their athletic directors to work on a common plan. So we are all going to have the same compliance plan and we're all going to enforce the same compliance plan as superintendents and athletic directors. So we, we all have a common plan and common compliance.
And to answer your question regarding combinations, they would be in their same pod. So they'd be seeing the same people as opposed to seeing multiple tools on a, on a weekly basis. So for instance, in a normal, any season, you would see three different, potentially three different schools. They're only going to see that same pod incoming back. So they're not, they would be exposed to potentially 15 additional people, like say with wrestling. I'm not sure their numbers, but they wouldn't be exposed to 50 other people on a weekly basis. It would be the same pod that they're seeing. And like Bill said, they're following the same protocol, so the contact tracing would be there as well.
Now Lauren, while we have you on this same topic, the combined sports, Casanova has an outdoor rink, is that right?
Yeah. So they're doing everything outdoors because they don't have the facilities at Morrisville. So they're doing an outdoor rink and they're utilizing, I think, the fairgrounds as well. So they're almost completely outdoors of ice hockey.
And my understanding with wrestling is that there's no one-on-one contact, is that right?
Right. So it's just, I don't even want to say skills and drills because there is no contact at all. It's, they're just, it's almost like just footwork and conditioning workouts. They're not even touching another person.
That's also the, the worst part of wrestling.
Travis, that was a good question. That was very helpful to know.
So yeah, so again, I just, so, so the combined sports, you know, so later down on this agenda is approving combined sports. When we approved combined sports, those sports are following the same phased guidance that we would be following.
Yes. So I made this plan with Casanova and Morrisville. Last Friday, we sat on a, a meeting together and made it.
But could they, could they move further ahead in their phases than we could or vice versa?
So right now we're asking for approval to move to phase two. If they move to phase three, which would be, they could only move to phase three if the Department of Health allowed us to go to phase three, which allowed games. And then if we recommend that we go to games, the only, if they go to phase three and we're not at the same place, our athletes just wouldn't be able to compete in competition. That was definitely the difference between phase three.
And for our combined sports, can you tell us the numbers for each, for ice hockey and wrestling?
So we have one ice hockey player, a senior. And for wrestling, we have one, potentially two, the wrestler, the one player that is going right now is also a senior. And then for football, which is fall two, I believe there's about eight or nine total athletes in, at the high school level.
When we're talking, when we're talking about a return to play, we're not talking about anything other than winter sports for tonight, correct though?
Yes, but I did want to talk about football because it's under the umbrella of higher sports.
That's fine. I just wanted to know, like, I, I'd like to wait on that piece, I guess, in my head. I'm not ready to go to football yet.
I was, Michelle, that was the part I was confused about too with the motion that we might look at later is it's really, but if it's just for winter, we're all clear.
And.
So for these practices, which, sorry, Corey, you go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. So for the practices, we're just talking JV and varsity. That is correct, right?
Yeah. So previous to this, in October, Coach LaPage has been running, in, he's been running like one or two sessions of modified open gym sessions. But if we were to look to expand this further and actually focus on games and interscholastic play, we'd focus strictly on JV and varsity just from a, a scheduling standpoint because we don't have the gym space right now to tackle modified as well.
Would there be a situation where a middle schooler with a higher skill would jump into?
Yeah. So we have, yep. So we have, I believe, three female athletes who are, meet their maturity score and have the physical ability and were selectively classified to play up. And they've been practicing since October with those, their specific groups. And then there's two middle school boy, boys' basketball players who've been playing up as well. And they've all passed the appropriate athletic placement process of tests, including the maturity attainment score. But, but that's been happening since October, since those open gym sessions.
So open gym's been happening this whole school year, basically.
Yes. And basically right at the completion of fall two. Or, sorry, fall one. So our soccer season.
Corey, did you have a?
After, after school and weekends or how is that working out?
It's been after school and, so on Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah. Lauren, I just want to say thank you for, for all the work that's gone into this. It's a, especially how you're, you're pretty new to the position. I don't know if everybody knows that, but this is a crazy year to be thrown into this kind of stuff. And there's definitely, it's the type of thing where there's definitely no easy answer and there's no perfect answer and, and trying to deal with a lot of different, a lot of different competing interests. And I think it's, it's really great to see how much work you go into it. So it's thinking about this. So it's thinking about this, this question's for, for Bill, actually. I think people might see all the work that's gone into this, this phased approach to sports. And say, why don't we have clear guidance like that for the schools? And I, just, I'm wondering if you could just explain to people what it is that's limiting us to having a phased approach? You know, in the similar, similar way to getting back to five days a week type of thing.
Sure, i- i- it all comes down to the six foot of social distancing guidelines, those have not changed. And, and you'll hear in my report later, the CDC is supposed to come out with new guidance tomorrow on the reopening of schools. And we're hopeful that they will be less restrictive in their six foot of social distancing. Right now with the six foot of social distancing, we just don't have the capacity physically or from a human capacity to be able to bring everybody back five days a week. We are going to, we are analyzing Wednesdays with our task force teams and with our faculty and staff. Trying to, to look at if we can bring students back on Wednesdays. But right now, the biggest barrier is the six foot of social distancing.
Thanks.
Bill, can we can, can continue that conversation in your, your report later in the meeting?
Sure can.
Just clarifications.
So I just had one more question about sports that I am neither for nor against, I'm simply asking. Is there any discussion about testing? When interscholaric play begins or anything along those lines?
So Anandaga County is tested, is testing and that's part of their requirement. I've spoken to Bill. A little bit about testing and securing tests. The cost of it would be, would make it unable for us to do it. It's like forty-five dollars per test and that's multiplied by about a hundred athletes per week. It would be really difficult. That conversation has come up in, in the Madison County AD meetings. And I think that one or two Madison County schools have a supply of tests at this point that they're using for free. But we don't have that, that luxury to, we don't have those tests.
Yeah, in our conversations with the Department of Health, they don't have the capacity to supply every school within the county testing and it's quite expensive.
Can I, but I. Casanova to participate in ice hockey, our athlete has to test weekly at, he has to go and, and set up tests on his own. Obviously we can't provide that for him. But, so Casanova is testing all their athletes, is having their athletes test themselves prior, each week prior to participating. So they are doing that, so in regards to a combination, that's one thing that you can think about, which is a good sign as well.
And that's, Lauren, they're doing that as. They're requiring out of their families, but at no cost to the district in Casanova.
Right, so the, each athlete has to go out and get the test themselves, so it's at the cost of the student. And the family.
Welcome to hockey. Thank you for all this work, Lauren, I really appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Board members, do we have other questions? Do we have other discussion we would like to have on the return to play? Right now, or are we ready to move towards a motion?
I guess.
I'm not asking for a vote to move towards a motion, I just don't want to stop the conversation if there's more to be had.
I guess I just want to have the open discussion and I've communicated a little bit. With, yeah, I just, before we do, and I'm all for moving, I'm all for moving forward and, and having a motion is. But I just want to, I want to have on the record, and I communicated with Lauren a little bit about this, the other side, like we all know. That there are families and kids who want to play sports. We know that, we know there's a lot of desire for that. But what is the other side? Where, where are the concerns? And the anxiety levels and the stresses and the worries on the other side? What does this mean for the custodial staff? What does this mean for teachers and coaches? What does this mean for, for other concerns within the building? Before we take that step forward?
So I did conduct a survey of our, of our building, the entirety of faculty. I got about fifty-five responses back. Of those fifty-five responses, it was split probably as evenly as, as you can. Let me pull the numbers up, I don't have them right in front of me. But I can talk while I'm pulling them up about the concerns that people had. So those that were for high-risk sports. They, the comments that were associated with it were it's best for the mental and emotional health of our students. The students need to return to some sort of normalcy and that they need to have something to do that's not just their score. You know, they, that there's been kind of stuff in front of a computer. So let me pull the numbers, I have it now. So thirty-eight point two percent were in support and that's twenty-one votes. Thirty-six point four percent said they are not in support. And I gave the option of I don't know. And twenty-five point five percent said I don't know. And I can talk a little bit more about the comments that were associated with it. The comments that accompanied the. Not in support were already saying that their levels of anxiety of transmission were high already. And then adding high-risk sports would only increase that. A common one I saw as well was how are we? How are we bringing, how are we going to do high-risk sports and then not have students in the building five days a week? A lot I saw was the risk outweighs the reward. Case impacts more than just the team, it could spread to the community. And then another few comments I saw were how do we prioritize high-risk sports over other extracurriculars who are not able to operate at the same level? The comments that were associated with I don't know is how can we participate in PE but not high-risk sports? Or how can we not participate in PE but high-risk sports, excuse me? Which was a question that you brought up as well. There were worries about other schools following our same national policies, to which I would add that because of the way that we're operating right now, you, with. All the superintendents being on the same board and all the athletic directors being on the same board, I don't anticipate that being as much of a problem. But I would say that I've spoken to our teams and our coaches at length. And they've all agreed that if we were to play interscholaric games and another school is not following our same national policies, they would end the game and leave. And they've all agreed to that. And that's something that they're willing to do in order to participate. Another few comments I got with I don't know, we're bringing outside members into our community and schools could increase cases. They were okay with in, in-house scrimmages, but interscholaric raised more concern. And then a few people asked about testing. So they split pretty evenly within our faculty.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
And you obviously feel pretty confident that the coaches and athletes will abide by these plans?
I do, they've been doing it since October. They've been doing it since October. With, and taking it on themselves also to help me create some of these, at a point where we didn't even have the, the guidance from Madison County Department of Health. I also know that like if, if we were to play interscholarically, that I would attend a lot of the away games. Miss Reese would attend a lot of the games, so we'd be there also as like a secondary reinforcement, but the, the coaches themselves, they just want to play, the kids just want to play. So they're willing to do anything at this point to play. So I feel pretty confident.
Michelle, I don't have any more questions, I'm ready to move forward if you are.
My own is if we move forward now, we're, we're, if we move now, we're moving to go to phase two. Is your intent that you would come back to the board in order to go to phase three? Or is the intent that we, we vote now and that sets the whole cascade in motion? I'm just curious.
My intent would be that, that we would move forward as it, because everything happened, seems to happen just.
Right.
You know, the Governor Cuomo made his announcement at three thirty, we, all athletic directors around the state know it was three thirty-three on Friday, January twentieth. Because that's when like the pin dropped, right? We all know that and that's kind of what we're anticipating to be in this situation as well. That there's not going to be much of a, an opportunity and with the season being so short.
Staying short.
Yeah, I don't want them to lose games.
Okay.
Corey, head scratch, you're good or head scratch, you have more questions?
I guess just one thing, what I never hear in a lot of these plans is, you know, like, are, do we have? Is there any kind of cutoff for when we say we, we have to move back? We have to go back a step? You know, is it one positive case, is it two, is it three? Do we have any sense of that at all? It seems like that's hard, a harder question to answer than it, than it seems.
Right, that's what, it's a hard metric to put a number to. In the event that there was a positive case within the team, it would, it would probably result in at least stopping a practice for two weeks of, because there would be so much close contact. So they would likely have to quarantine those athletes. So in the instance of a girls' basketball, potentially like if there was a positive case among the team, it could potentially stop right there anyway.
And then with our protocols in place. If there is one positive case and on a team, how will that affect attendance at school? So how many, would that, that would, obviously would that mean quarantine of everybody on the team?
That would be determined by the Department of Health contact tracing.
Okay.
It could, and then our. Your team, depends on exposure and the contact.
And are anybody else sharing classes with those athletes? Just by the, by the nature of sharing classes, considered close contact?
Only to the one positive. It wouldn't be a whole team, you know, not, it wouldn't be the contact of every team member, it would be any contacts of the one positive.
But it, but I'm saying like, so that one positive is every class of that one positive student is in. Is everybody in that class considered a close contact or only certain people? Or even, not even because they're in the class, because we're spaced out? Then they wouldn't necessarily be close contacts unless there's other contact outside of the class. Does that question make sense, it's a lot?
I mean, that's really the question of what if there's a positive student in the school? Is, is the whole classroom considered a contact or is it, regardless of where that positive came from? And I don't, I don't, do we know yet what the Department of Health will say about our system? Often you don't know until you have to work through it with them.
Yeah, you, you don't know.
I believe.
Go ahead, Travis.
I was going to say, I believe the scenario Corey is kind of alluding to happened to a couple of fall sports in the central New York region where it did affect like the team they were playing.
I, I mean, I think. Yes, but at the same time, we are six feet away from each other in classes, technically, I do believe. So that should help reduce the amount of people. It'll come down to the contact tracing, but.
But there's, there's a secondary rule.
There were some games that happened where.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I'm saying for our situation, I'm not saying about that one, I'm saying for our situation. Hopefully we're set ourselves up successfully to be far enough apart that we are minimizing that. But we won't know until it happens.
Yeah, and, and we didn't have a positive case in our in-house season in the fall. So we were able to move through that in-house season safely.
Yeah, there, there are some secondary rules about contact tracing, about if you're enclosed, in an enclosed space for more than an hour. And what the Department of Health considers an enclosed space is, again, it's often something you just don't know until you have to work through it. So it is possible that based on their contact tracing guidelines, that one positive student in any classroom could quarantine. The whole classroom. But, but that's true regardless of where that positive comes from, whether it's.
And, but Bill and Lauren, you, you both feel confident that right now moved to phase two is safe? And prudent for the district and that if the conditions are met, that you outlined for phase three, that it'll still be safe for our, for our district?
I do, yeah.
Yes.
Do I have a motion? Am I ready to read the motion? Do I have a motion to approve the return to play in house sports as recommended by the Athletic Director and Superintendent?
I'll move. I'll second that.
We have already had discussion, but is there any other final discussion before we vote?
Yes. I just want to clarify that this is the recommendation of the superintendent and the athletic director.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it is just for the winter sports season?
Correct.
Okay.
So on that, since this is just the winter sports season, would we say this is successful if the next season is supposed to start March first? Would there be a special meeting to move through the fall two and the spring for each one of those sessions? Is that the anticipated plan at this time?
Yes.
I think there'd have to be, yeah. Good question though. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Felt like I needed to say it for that one. Thank you all, Lauren, I would like you to stay on, there is some public participation later, some of the things you have kind of answered, but some. But we'll go through all of them, so if you don't mind, stick with us, that'd be greatly appreciated. If you want to. Shut your camera off for a few minutes and then join us back, that's fine too.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks.
Now we're going to move. Now we're going to move into personnel. And this is my least favorite part. Is all the retirements. So I'm going to do these individually because I feel that each person that retires from our district. Deserves a moment and this is their moment. So. I need a motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Barbara Orth, effective June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, as recommended by the superintendent. With sincere appreciation for her ten and a half years of service rendered to the district.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion would be held in. What is it, executive?
Executive.
I couldn't get there, I'm so sad that there's so many retirements. So. So with sincere appreciation, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I need a motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes for Hope Hanson, effective June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, as recommended by the superintendent. With sincere appreciation for her thirty-point-six years of service rendered to the district.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion would be an executive session with sincere appreciation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Bridget Smith, effective June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, as recommended by the superintendent. With sincere appreciation for her twenty-eight years of service rendered to the district.
I'll move.
I'll second.
With sincere appreciation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes for Robert Posner, effective June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, as recommended by the superintendent. With sincere appreciation for his twenty-nine years of service rendered to the district.
I'll move.
I'll second.
With sincere appreciation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Sharon Follett, effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. As recommended by the superintendent with sincere appreciation for her thirty-two and a half years of service rendered to the district. All those.
I'll second.
Okay, with sincere appreciation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Patricia Roland, effective. June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, as recommended by the superintendent. With sincere appreciation for her seventeen years of service rendered to the district.
I'll move.
Move.
I'll second.
With sincere appreciation. With sincere appreciation, all those in favor? With sincere appreciation, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, you did the math, Michelle. How many years is that?
Yeah, but there's more now.
No, I've redone it. It's 100 and it's 147.6 years of service and the majority of these teachers were there when I was in school, so I'm a little emotional tonight. So to all of you, congratulations.
And Michelle, just to add, that's that's just the service to this district. So when you go beyond when you look at the entirety of these folks' careers, it's significantly more.
Yes. So
Remember, there was a moment for a sheet cake.
Right? Couple sheet cakes.
To think about the number of students that these six outstanding educators have have taught, have mentored, have guided throughout their educational experience here at HCS. When you emotional is not the word to describe how indebted we are to their service to this district.
You're replaceable.
So the good thing is many of them want to come back and sub. So now I can smile again. A motion to approve.
Can any of them but drive a bus?
I need a motion to approve Hope Hansen, Bridget Smith, Rob Posner, Sharon Follett, and Patricia Rowland as substitute teachers effective September 1, 2021, as recommended by the Elementary Principal and Superintendent.
I'll move. I'll second.
And discussion would be an exec session. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, and thank you. A motion to approve the following winter coaches for the 2020-2021 school year as recommended by the Athletic Director and Superintendent. This is for varsity boys, varsity girls, JV boys, and JV girls basketball.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
So my only question would be on the girls, since that's one pod. Would those two coaches coach together?
They would share. They would coach at the same time, but when they had games, they'd coach separately.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. A motion to approve the recommendation of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we're at 6.4 policies. We've got discussions on 5430, 5460, 7365. I'm gonna turn it over to somebody because I'm not the one that needs to speak now. It's your turn.
Here you go. Bill, is there anything that you'd like to say about?
No, I think we're good. We we've done a thorough review. We've made changes. I think very applicable changes. So I think they're they're much cleaner policies and ready for for action.
Anybody else?
Thank you for the old and the new version.
Yes, thank you. Super helpful.
Okay, well, that was a wonderful discussion. Thank you all. I feel like there should be more, but I'm I'm glad that we're all. We have such a good committee that really is heading on this. It's not my number one like best thing, so I'm glad you guys are all doing it for me. For us.
Yeah, I guess just to be I guess just to be clear, these are updates to policies that are part of just the regular change in law. It's just updated law. There's no major effect on how we're actually doing business other than to make sure we're complying with with new laws.
Perfect. Grateful for your eyes on it. All right, so we've already talked about this, but we need a motion to approve Hamilton's participation in the following combined sports programs as recommended by the Athletic Director and Superintendent for the 2020-2021 winter season, I guess I'm gonna put it. Varsity ice hockey and varsity wrestling.
I'll move.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. We need a motion to accept the monetary donation of $3,306.25 to the Hamilton from the Hamilton Emerald Foundation with sincere appreciation and to increase the budget by this amount as recommended by the Business Manager and Superintendent.
I'll move.
Except I have to unmute to second.
Hold on, I was just gonna I remember what was the donation for?
The spectrophotometer.
Thank you. I was gonna say it's a spectrometer or something that I wasn't gonna say the name right of, so thank you, Ellen, for that.
That's what I'm hearing.
What is that, by the way?
Um, it's a tool used in science. I don't actually know in this context what how how it's used, so.
A science tool.
Science tool.
A very fancy schmancy one at that.
Yes, that we no longer have to borrow. Oh, it's it's for the science classroom and that we no longer have to borrow from anywhere, so this is wonderful. No, it's okay. That brings us to the administrators' report, and this is the most fun because I get to just randomly pick the administrators and you don't know what order I'm gonna go in.
I didn't get any action on the donations.
Oh, the donation, you're right. And if the donation measures light absorption.
I was just gonna put that in the chat.
You can track reactions in real time. Thank you, Astrid. So I need a motion. Thanks, Debbie.
We have a motion. We just need to
We just need to vote.
Oh, yeah.
We have a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was a cliffhanger.
Sorry, I got so stressed about the name of the thing. All right, administrators' reports. Matt? You're up.
Thanks, Michelle. I was fully prepared to give a lengthy update on the spectrophotometer, but since Astrid did so, I I guess I'll skip that. I just have one thing. I'll talk a little bit more about the budget later on. I know it has its own agenda item tonight. Just just a quick update. Last week, Michelle, Bill, and I had our exit conference with the Office of the State Comptroller. We had an audit that took place beginning over the summer and ran through most of the fall. It was a really tough time to have to go through that. The Office of the State Comptroller does occasional audits. They do. They have a rotation where they go to school districts and other municipalities and public entities throughout the state and do targeted audits. So we had our exit conference last week. Our report is currently in draft status, so we're not at liberty to discuss it yet. We have to provide an initial district response from our offices by February 26. We will do that. Then we'll ultimately have to do some corrective action before the the report is finalized and made public, so we're happy to have that. You know, the examination part behind us, we have a little bit of work to do. I think it's safe to say, you know, nothing nothing real concerning, so that's good news. Thank you to Bill, Michelle, staff here at the district that got pulled into that. Like I said, it was a tough time to have to go through it, but we're through it no less, so that's it for me.
Great, thanks, Matt. Chris?
Myself here. All right, thank you. It's been a pretty busy month in the technology department. We've been working really closely with the maintenance team installing a whole bunch of new equipment. I have to give a shout out and kudos to the maintenance team. You know, they've really been busting their butts to get this stuff installed for us so that it can get into teachers and students' hands, so thank them very much for that. And it's not just the Promethean boards. It's a number of other things including, you know, a new sound system in the gymnasium. Anytime that we need to run run new wire, you know, they're right there helping us out, so you know, we wouldn't be able to get all this stuff connected and turned on if it wasn't for them, so thank them for that. Just something else I thought I would mention would NICE had released its preliminary results for its Fall Digital Equity Survey. This was a survey that the entire state of New York passed out to every school trying to assess the connectivity of students during the pandemic. And some of the results were kind of interesting. Statewide, 69% of students were found to have access to a device that was provided to them by the school for both use in school and at home. And then they also found that 6% of students have insufficient internet access. And, you know, I was pretty pleased that at Hamilton, you know, the number of devices that we have that for our students is 100%. Every student's got a device. And, you know, the number of connected kids that we've got is 100%, thanks to you know, thanks to the work that we've done with the hotspots, so I'm pretty pleased with that. We're just about in the process of undergoing our regional, our yearly annual commitment meeting with Regional Information Center. We're in the process of undergoing a pretty comprehensive audit of all the software that we use. I'm looking for any overlapping software with similar capabilities. Hopefully gonna find us some some cost savings there. I think there is some. It's it's taking some time, but but I'm getting there. I think that's my report.
Thanks, Chris.
Any any questions about either my report or my comments?
Do we do we want to put a plug in that you
I have to say that go ahead, Ellen.
I was just gonna say, do we want to put a plug in that you were actually successful in donating some of those iPads that were accessed last month to Community Memorial Hospital to use to help with patient family communications in a world of COVID when families aren't allowed into the hospital, so iPads that would have otherwise been essentially trashed.
Yeah, I'm I'm actually I'm ecstatic that, you know, they were these are iPads that are, for those of you who are Apple nerds, these are the iPad 2s. You probably remember Steve Jobs and his turtleneck coming out and introducing these. These came out about 2009. So the fact that these were able to be utilized in such a positive way, we were super happy to do it, so we prepared these and you know, Mr. Larson knew right where to drop them off. And the hospital was very happy to get them, so we were we were pleased that we were able to do that rather than having them be recycled, being being put to good use, so yeah, that was nice.
Any questions or comments for Chris?
That's great to hear. I didn't know. Yeah, I just want to say, Chris, I really Chris, I really like the way that your board reports are formatted. I want to know how goals are being addressed and your reports do just that, so thank you for that work you put into it. The only other thing I have is Chromebook order. Where are we at? Have you heard anything?
Yeah, I'm still in I'm still in a stasis mode and things are starting to get a little hairy for us in the technology department here. So we are taking, you know, we're taking Chromebooks that are broken and we are reusing parts from them to make other broken ones work. We're we're stretching them as far as we possibly can. We're still okay, but we gotta get this order by April, so my 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 representative expects a biweekly call from me. Hey, how are things going? You know, any movement on the on the Chromebook front? She assures me that she thinks that the the supply is gonna loosen up here by April at the latest, so I'm gonna hold her to it.
And we're waiting on the supply. We're not waiting on anything else, correct?
No, the order, we've we've received the the Smart School Respond Act and the order has been placed. You know, if I go and examine the order in, you know, my supplier's portal, you know, it says on hold or awaiting shipment. So that that's where we're at. And when I call her, she's like, I know you need them. Everybody needs them. I'm like, we really need them. So that's where we're at with them.
Anything else for Chris? All right. Heather, you're up next on my screen.
Hey, good evening. So I'm gonna start off with some really exciting news. Actually, yesterday on February 10th, the Reading Department organized a ELA data team meeting. And what that means is basically every single student in the elementary school is touched on and we take a look at the assessment data. So we had beginning September data for ELA. We also had the winter assessment data for ELA in NWEA and the Fanta-Simpinell benchmarking. And then we also use progress monitoring, weekly or biweekly data from teachers as well. So I have been kind of waiting on pins and needles to really see, you know, first of all, I was so happy in September to get that baseline. And then now, you know, in the wintertime to take a look and see what growth there was. And I think both Kevin and I were just really, you know, remarkably impressed with the growth of our students, and so that was really, really important to see. So we, you know, saw growth in both of our assessments and also from teachers, you know, individual comments and and pieces in the classroom as well, so it's huge. It was honestly like I went home that day as if it was, you know, Christmas Day for for, I think, everybody at school. So we are, we then adjust their the interventions that students have, and it's a it's a huge process of doing that, but we really felt like it was just, you know, really what we're about as a school. We really want students to learn and we want to make sure as teachers and principal now that, you know, we're really meeting each and every child's needs there, so that was a huge, huge piece. And then kind of moving forward into the math curriculums, we I have been, you know, mentioning over several months that we're starting to look at some new math curriculums. This month, we are actually this week, it's been a busy week in elementary. We had two representatives, one from Ready Math and one from Envision Math come and do a Google Meet and do a presentation of their curriculums. And they've also sent us samples which are in the individual grade level on teachers' rooms. I created a rubric so that we could take a look at all of the different math curriculums, kind of using the same criteria. And it's gonna be a long process. We have three more curriculums to look at, and so we will be doing that over the next several months. But that's could really need to see some of the pieces that Chris was talking about in terms of making sure that we don't have overlap within different software pieces. Also, you know, it's interesting to look at in our math curriculum, we've kind of pieced together some different parts, which some curriculums will just have all of it. They'll have the digital resources online. They'll have assessments online, some of the teaching and instructional videos as well, so it is. It's really interesting to see what the updated curriculums look like now. And then also we're really keeping an eye on that alignment with the next generation standards, so that's the the other piece of that, too. So we are the HCS Reads Committee in conjunction with the Steering Team and the PTO. We put together our plan. We've picked our title for our elementary book read. We're looking forward to kicking that off officially March 15th. A lot of support from the PTO and the steering team, so that is much appreciated. And, you know, I really, it is kind of one of those projects And, you know, I really, it is kind of one of those projects that involves the entire school. And so I'm really looking forward to that community event. Another kind of inspiration that came from Elementary Steering Team was Brain Buddies. And we have that up and going at this point in time. Brain Buddies, one of the pieces that we've noticed that elementary students need support with, completion of homework assignments, especially on the remote days. Or, you know, and all of the elementary students are remote at some point or another, if not fully remote. And so we have connected with the Cove and put a program in place where there will be a Colgate student that will be there to support the elementary student in completing their work. And this was a program that teachers, based on teacher recommendation. So the teachers recommended students that they felt would benefit from that. So that's up and going. We also have other collaborative efforts with Colgate, such as the Sidekicks Program. Will take place on a virtual scale. And just one more, HOG also. So the, they're working on that, too. So we're really, really happy to have, continue that, that piece with Colgate. We also celebrated on Wednesday, February third, the Global School of, Global Day of Play in the elementary school. And which is, you know, an effort to really make sure that we're celebrating the importance of childhood play in terms of having it be directed by children. So teachers implemented this Day of Play in different ways. Because the third was a remote date for us, some of the teachers set up activities for children to do at home. Other teachers also did that on the other A cohort day or the B cohort day. So we did, we, we did figure out a way to celebrate that unstructured playtime for students as well. And upcoming events in the elementary, we have a virtual orchestra performance. The Philadelphia Orchestra we're connecting with, so we're looking forward to doing that after break, February twenty-second through twenty-six. We have an elementary virtual musical being planned. So our virtual play was a huge success in the fall. And so I'm really excited that, to see the musical. They've already picked out a script and will be beginning to look for students to participate in that. We have started, the recess time has been really a huge, I can't say enough about that. And that really does tie in a little bit with that, that importance of unstructured play in the elementary. So we have incorporated sliding into recess and where students really are enjoying that so much. And we've also opened the playground up on a rotating basis. So that has been super exciting in the elementary, too. So yeah, so there's the elementary report.
Thanks, Heather. I have a question to start. The Brain Buddies, is that something that if parents wanted their children in, could they request even if the teacher hadn't submitted for their child?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So there, you know, we, we did put the recommendations out and send home the permission slips. But if that's certainly, if parents feel that that would be helpful for their student, there's, there is room. We've, what we've heard from the Cove is that Colgate has a lot of volunteers at this point in time. And a lot of Colgate students are looking for a way to connect. So I would, yeah, possibly say that.
Okay, and thank you again for the-
My question touches on that.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Sorry.
Yep.
Michelle, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank for the Day of Play. It was nice that the children were home. However, they couldn't ask me for screen time until way after lunch when school ended because it was a half a day. So it was great because it wasn't my fault that they couldn't have screens and they had to really play and it was wonderful.
Oh, I'm so glad you brought that up because that's another important part of that. And especially now with using screens as we are right now, you know, I think that that was a really good reminder to everybody to take a break, so.
Travis?
Yeah, so Heather, my question has to do with Brain Buddies. I think that's very exciting to hear. I know how important that is. And so my question is, what kind of virtual supervision is taking place with that? I guess what I'm getting at is are, are students meeting solely with a college student virtually?
Yes, so the Cove, we've been doing this with Liberty Kids as well. So the Cove is, so there are a couple of different pieces. One, there is some training for the volunteers, so that's, you know, one component of that. And then it is the Colgate student and the elementary student are connecting, finding a time that mutually works with them. And the idea would be that the parent would be in support. So it's outside of the time that they're in school. And there is release forms and permission forms that parents sign to allow their students to participate in that. But yes.
Okay, so you do see the concern I have, though. I guess my concern would be that, you know, normally that would happen in person in an ideal world. But you found a creative solution, but because it's a student with a college student, that's where my concern is. But if they're getting training and if you feel comfortable with it, obviously that's fine. I just, that's where it kind of caught me by surprise.
I see, yeah. I mean, I think that that is, you know, that is definitely an area of concern. We've talked to the director of the Cove and, you know, we have implemented it in the, with Liberty Kids. And the, the volunteers are, you know, typically, you know, vetted by the Cove and, and there's a lot of instruction. I know Capri Trupzano has worked with the volunteers to talk about, you know, what types of activities are going to, the, the Colgate students will be doing with the elementary students. She's really going to be a liaison as well and actively involved in that program. So that was another reason for that. She will be working with a teacher in the classroom as, as well as with the volunteer. And then, you know, to really talk about the focus of those lessons. But yes, and there, and, you know, that is, that is an area of concern. And then that is something that parents would have to agree to, that they feel comfortable with.
Very good. Well, thank you for explaining.
Yeah, and we, you know, really encourage the parents to also be present during those sessions as well, so.
Agreed. On a lighter note, while we have you, I know for the little kids especially, Valentine's Day is a really big deal. So what is Valentine's Day going to look like this year in elementary school?
Yeah, we're so excited. I'm so glad you brought that up. Because we actually had our Valentine's Day Part One celebration today. Yeah, so we were really, really happy about that. So we ended up having the Valentines come in early and we quarantined the Valentines for a bit in the classroom. And then the cafeteria provided a treat for us this year in school. And so as I made my way around the classrooms this afternoon, it was really fun to see Valentine's Day happening. So, yeah.
It's new Valentine's Day, so that's great.
We do. So tomorrow will be part two, so. But it, all of those things, you know, as simple as maybe you're, you know, you might take it for granted in past years, but it's so important to our school culture and community and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really is nice.
Good to hear. Thank you.
And just to tack onto that list of impressive programs from Colgate, the foreign language program with second grade will be starting again as well.
Oh, good. Good, good. So, and I guess I haven't been up to date on that and that will be virtual as well?
Yep, yeah, it'll be virtual. Registration is going out today. So parents can sign up their kids, choose a language or multiple if they want, so.
Yes, that's excellent. Yep.
All right. Thank you very much, Heather. Mark, you're up next.
Hello, everyone. So report cards went out last week. So we spent some time during homeroom and students were able to access the report cards through the student portal. Currently, the counseling office and I are, you know, coming through some of that data and setting up meetings with students who we think might need some extra support based off of that information. Also, this time of year, every year, students are filling out class request forms for next year already, you know. It, it's, it's surprising to me how fast things have gone, but we're, we're at that point where kids are starting to do that. And that's, that's going to be useful for, for me when we're looking at, you know, what offerings we'll have next year and looking at, you know, budgetary reasons for collecting that information and being able to make some decisions moving forward. Also with that, I've been holding department check-ins with, with the teachers. So throughout the year, we've had, you know, faculty meetings, we've had team meetings. But those meetings, much like earlier in the board meeting when we had twenty-four faces on the screen, it can be, you know, not, not as personal. So I, I've, I've set up meetings that are smaller to, to meet with teachers, to see how things are going, to see how their perception of the students, how the students are doing. And then also to have them start to think about next year as well and different teaching assignments so that we can better plan for the future. We, we have made some changes with the gymnasium, as Lauren was saying earlier. We, so previously, we had a desk covering the entire gymnasium. That's where everybody ate lunch with a few people in the cafeteria, a couple here and there. But we moved a lot of those desks from half the gym into the cafeteria, removed the big round tables and long tables. And we were able to fit more people socially distanced in the cafeteria that way. So we've been able to handle the lunch load with half the gym and half the cafeteria, which allows for not only basketball after school, but PE during the day as well. So students, students have been appreciative of that, especially with the temperatures we've had lately. So that's been a, been a positive move. NICE had had a comment period regarding the waivers for New York State assessments. That period ended last week. So hopefully we will have more information soon about the fate of state exams. Middle School Council has put together a plan for tomorrow to kind of have a, have a bit of a, a bit of time for them to make connections with their friends. So we, we've blocked off time at the end of the day tomorrow and, and middle school students will be going into different rooms with their friends and, and have a little bit of time to be able to socialize and, and do things that they want to do. Any questions?
Yeah. Year after year, I hear about how important after-school activities are, which I would agree with. I know the pandemic has totally changed all of that. So what I'm wondering is what in-person after-school activities or clubs have been taking place? Or what ones have been happening, happening virtually?
So like chess club has been happening virtually. You've seen the BBC, BBB videos, so the tech club is happening. Esports is going on. So we have a lot of those clubs that are happening virtually. We don't have any currently after-school in-person clubs. Recently, we've added a, a late bus run for Tuesdays and Thursdays that students will be able to, to take advantage of. Initially, the, the purpose of that was academic, to be able to provide supports for students that need that. But possibly we can, we can include some of, some of the in-person after-school activities as well.
Would sports conditioning be considered a club?
Sports conditioning? It is not a club on our official club list currently.
My question is, if, if that can happen, how come other after-school activities, academic involved, can't happen? Does it have to do with regulations or?
Uh, yeah. What are you referring to specifically? What kind of club do you think?
Well, if, if they can do after-school sports conditioning after school and on weekends, how come academic clubs can't happen after school and on weekends?
Well, previous to recently, we haven't had an after-school bus, so it was more convenient for a lot of people to do things online.
Okay, so what after-school clubs or activities are not happening this year in person or virtually?
There was a previous board meeting, there was, there was a list presented to the board of clubs that were happening. I might have to get that list to, to tell you a definite answer. We, we do have a series of clubs that sometimes don't happen just due to interest. I believe that like Sisters this year isn't happening due to interest. Model UN isn't happening this year because of just the chaos of things. And we didn't really have a person that had experience with that, so that's not happening this year. But I'd have to refer to the list to get you, to give you details.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, I'm excited. I read the, I got a copy of the morning announcements and I read about tomorrow for the middle school. And it's really exciting that they put that together, they found a way to do it safely and that it's going to work out for them, so.
Yeah, I think they're excited about it.
Mark, I also wanted to comment on that. I have a middle schooler that, when I read that, was very, very excited. And I think that that, that was really great, so I also wanted to share that.
Yep, and the students have done all the legwork to try to get this together and to, and to make it happen. So they've done a good job.
Anything else for Mark before we move on? Kevin, you're up next.
Good evening, everybody. So I just wanted to add to end of what Heather was talking about with our data team that met yesterday. You know, one of the things that really stood out to both Heather and I and the, and the team was that one of our assessments, it's called the NWEA. It's a standardized assessment that's given to students across the nation. It's probably the most popular standardized test that there is. We give the test three times a year, like Heather said, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. And what it, you know, it does is it being standardized and so many kids taking this exam that it lets, it kind of gives us a chance to compare how we're doing to other schools and other students across the country. And the thing that's really stood out to us was our growth. And so to give an example of that is, so the test is given in, in September and a student might show that she is in the fiftieth percentile for her group in a specific area of reading or math or a certain area. And then it's given in the, in the, in the winter, or just recently. And that student might show that they're in the fifty-fifth percentile. And it would show that they made five percentile growth. And we, as we were having our data team meeting, we were noticing that the majority of our kids were showing positive growth, almost, I would say, an overwhelming majority of our kids. So what does that tell us? So compared to students across the nation, millions of kids that have taken this, our kids are growing at a faster rate than the other students across the nation. And so I don't have the entirety of the data complete because the window for the data just closed yesterday. But I plan for the next, Heather and I will, for the next board meeting, get that aggregated for everyone. I believe it's going to show that our students are growing at a faster pace than most kids across the country. So what does that mean? That means whatever we're doing from September until the end of January is working better than most schools across the country. So I think what it'll say is that this model of this hybrid model we're using, the, the work that our teachers are doing with our students, the, the way that we're doing instruction is, is being very successful. And so I hope to have a really cleaner report on that for you to look at at our next meeting. So it's, it was really exciting to see that. And I'm just really interested to dive into that as a data person and, and see what kind of growth we're, we're, we're showing here, so. And speaking of that, I just want to pull up a slide and, so that I can just kind of, I'll be quick with this data. In my report that was submitted, I had, had given you something called HHS enrollment data. I just wanted to explain that a little bit because it kind of gives us a, a window into the future. Someone give me a verbal that you can see that, because I can't see you.
Got it.
Got it, okay. All right, so what I did was I took two pieces of information, and actually I do this every year. It is the live birth that happened. So the kids that are born each year, that's the, the blue. Hang on a sec. So that's this, this bit here, this blue line, okay? So you can see going across from two thousand and seven, or two, I'm sorry, from two thousand and two all the way up to two thousand and eighteen is the last data that we have. You can see the number of kids that were born in the Hamilton School District for each of those years. The students that were born, they're seniors now, were born in two thousand and three. And you can see that there were forty-three students born that year. And there are currently forty-seven seniors enrolled here at Hamilton. So I say currently, I do have to say that- um, I do have to say that the data that we're using is from March first of last spring. Um, there were forty-seven students enrolled that were born that year. I can't use the data from right now. Um, because of COVID, we've got a lot of students that are on, um, they're being homeschooled, um, so they're not counted, um, in, in the data. So it would be skewed a little bit. So I had to go back until before COVID to, to use this data. So, um, a couple of things that we should focus on here, uh, one is that if you look at the difference here. So the, so if you look at this year's seniors, two thousand and three, you see that there are four more students that are currently enrolled than were born that year. And if you go across this bottom level here, you can see that for the most part, um, it's, it, the number of live births and the number of students that are enrolled are pretty, it's a pretty good indicator of the number of suits we're gonna have. So, um, there are a few outliers. Um, you've got, um, so in two thousand and four and two thousand and five, we have, uh, eight less and nine less kids. And then you've got in two thousand and nine, um, this crazy sixth grade class has started it, you know, with forty-three births. And they're up to sixty students in that cohort right now. So you see a gain of seventeen. Those are real outliers. But for the most part, you're within five students. So why do we bring that up? Why is that important? Um, well, you look what's coming down the road and where we've been. You've got this highlighted and red over here. You have twenty-seven students, um, that were born three years ago, or four years ago now. Um, that's far and away the lowest number of kids that were born, um, in the last, I don't know how many years we have here on our chart. Um, and then you look at the following year, who, students that were born three years ago, there's only thirty-six. And that's the second lowest, um, that we've had. So we've got back-to-back years with very small numbers. Um, yeah, this, this group, two thousand and seventeen, there'll be precares next year and kindergartners the following year, uh, followed by that other small cohort. So what you see is, um, that our student population is continuing to shrink. Um, and just the other piece that I did want to share was if you look at this information on, on the graph, um, both live births and students that are enrolled, um, there's a trend here, that looks like this. Okay? Um, so that's kind of saying, you know, from two thousand and two through two thousand and eighteen, the, the latest data that we have, um, you can see a trend of downward enrollment, so. Um, wh- why is all this important? Um, it does help us, um, to look into the future, to help us prepare, um, for um, the future. Questions?
Yeah, Kevin, well, that data with the live births.
Sure.
Other schools probably in the area, are they, if you know, like similar trajectory that we are, a lot of them are slowly declining in enrollment. Is that true?
You know, I don't have their data, but from what I hear in my meetings, yes, they, it's a similar kind of trend, uh, that we're seeing. Um, so yeah.
Pretty easy to act, data that's strict enrollment numbers. I think you'll see a similar trend with enrollment. The, the cohort survival that Kevin does, putting together the live births, putting it up against the enrollment, that, that's not something that's readily available. So if you, if you wanted to look for similar trends with live births, that's something you'd have to take the time to, to research and put together. But definitely in terms of enrollment, I think you'd see a similar trend.
Yeah, so thank you, Matt. Kevin, I did have a question for you. I, I had to write it down here, so I didn't screw it up. Um, not too long ago, we were designated fairly or not, a focus district by the state. Like talking about this, we even talked about this, you're blue in the face, I get it. I bring this up because I'm curious of the challenges of ensuring that those students who are economically disadvantaged progress academically the same as the rest of the students. How has hybrid learning and other things pandemic-related affected that, if any?
That's a really, that's a really good question, Travis. And I will have that data for you, uh, when I present. Um, with this NWA debt, we can pull it out of the NWA data. Um, we, you know, we're seeing growth across the board, but to tease out our economically disadvantaged students would be really smart. Really to tease on all of our subgroups. So that's a piece I'll, I'll put together for you for our next, my next presentation.
Very good. The NDA WEA data, are you able to, I know every class is different, you know, you have classes that are stronger and weaker. But are you able to compare data from say like third grade this year to third grade last year as far as growth?
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. It's, every student has a graph, just like I shared with the, you know, the enrollment trend. Every student has a graph from when they start taking it, all the way up to the present. So you have students in sixth grade, they, they have, uh, you know, that we started in first or second grade. So, you know, they might have four or five years of data to see where their growth is.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Anything else for Kevin? All right, that puts us to superintendent's update. So Bill, it's all you.
All right, so I'll start with good news out of state ed. We finally have a permanent commissioner of education. So Dr. Betty Rosa, who has been the acting, um, interim commissioner for the past six months, was recently named as the permanent commissioner. She's a former chancellor and she's a former superintendent within New York State. So she has a, a real understanding of the difficulties and complexities that we are facing as districts, um, not only through this pandemic, but through normal times. So, um, our, um, New York State Council of School Superintendents, uh, fully endorses her. And, um, I'm really pleased that she's gonna be our new commissioner. So hopefully good things will come out of state ed, um, moving forward. Um, the second piece out of state ed, Mark alluded to, um, the federal waiver requests. Um, the council of school superintendents wrote a letter and submitted it February fourth to the acting secretary of education, asking them to, um, grant an extension of the waiver to, um, continue to suspend state assessments. Um, that won't happen. We probably won't have news on that until President Biden appoints, um, Dr. Cardona, the new, um, secretary of education. So stay tuned on that. Um, but we're hopeful that all state assessments will be su- suspended and that waiver will be granted. And that would be three through eight assessments and the New York State Regents exams. So hopefully that'll be coming soon. Um, good news from MO BOCES has expanded their foundations course. The foundations course is a tenth grade program. Uh, it's an exploratory program where tenth graders can go to BOCES and be exposed to the BOCES experience in all, um, of their content areas. Um, it, it's like an enrichment program, an exploratory exposure program. BOCES has decided now to, um, incorporate that into ninth grade. So ninth grade students will now have the opportunity to go to BOCES as part of their foundations. Um, it can be taken independently or inclusive, um, with the tenth grade program, um, to get a real hands-on experience to the BOCES experience and their offerings. And then after that ninth and tenth grade, then they can declare their, their, um, pathway at BOCES if they choose to. Or they can choose to stay within district and take our CTE programs within, uh, Mrs. Bosser's program. So that's exciting news out of BOCES. That's a, that's a really nice addition for students. Um, we've been pushing for that for a few years now, to have our ninth graders included, and, um, they're finally doing that. So really good news. Um, I want to talk about reopening and the discussions that we're having in-house. Um, you know, when I say reopening, bringing kids back to school more than they are now. You know, and we continue to have these discussions internally, weekly in our cabinet meetings. And, you know, looking and analyzing, um, the guidance document, um, that seems to be the biggest barrier, cause that has not changed. Even though infection rates are down, we're being told that the tr- rate of transmission within schools is not happening. The, the document that we are being guided by and that we are being held to within our reopening plan has not changed. And that's the six foot of distancing that is the real barrier for us. And I know there's been questions about, well, neighboring schools are doing it, how are they doing it? Uh, and I can't comment on that because every school's capacity for facilities, for human capacity is different. I can tell you that our physical capacity and our human capacity within the building cannot support bringing kids back fully five days a week, everybody back. We just don't have it. And stay within six feet of social distancing. We, we just can't do it. Um, right now, we are looking at, um, Wednesdays. Uh, we're doing a deep dive and a deep analysis on, um, can we bring students back on Wednesdays and on a rotating basis? Um, our task force teams are going to convene. Uh, we're gonna have discussions with the faculty and really analyze Wednesdays, um, to try to bring students back more, um, for in-person learning. We all know that in-person learning, um, far outweighs remote learning. However, the, the, the rules that we have to abide by have not changed. And our plan, um, is working. Our, our students are safe, our faculty and staff are safe. We've had one positive case with a student, we've had one positive case with a staff member. Um, our students are still getting in-person instruction. Um, there is a comment, um, about, well, why can't you extend the day? Um, to make the day longer. Well, we have contractual obligations that we have to adhere to, that would not allow us to do that. There's a comment about, well, can't you hire more staff? Well, we have financial obligations and our budget can't support hiring more staff at this time. So those, we have to live within the barriers that we have. Um, we are trying to be creative. We are looking at all avenues to try to, to bring kids back. A- and another big piece that, um, I, I think needs to be discussed is that we have close to a hundred kids that are fully remote, that our teachers are also responsible to educate. And a lot of that remote learning happens on Wednesdays. Um, that is a day of check-in for our fully remote learners. So we have to be cognizant of those students and be respectful of those families' decisions to keep their students home. But we also have the obligation to educate them. So i- i- it's a real balancing act and we are trying, um, to look at different ways, um, because we know that people want, um, you know, more students back in the building. We want students back in the building five days a week. That is our goal. Um, but until the CDC and then the New York State Department of Health relaxes their six feet of social distancing, that's just not feasible for us right now. And I want to be real clear and upfront and honest about that. Um, you know, tho- that is the barrier. And it's not that we're not trying or we don't want to, we want to. But that is, that is the barrier right now. Um, so that's, you know, that's where we're at. We'll, we'll continue to look, we'll continue to analyze. You know, I, I heard a comment that, you know, there was a rumor that we're not gonna change anything into the fall. That's just not true. We are looking, we are trying. Um, if we can change things, we will. And if we can't, we won't. We're gonna do what's safe and what's best for our students at this time. And right now, our students are safe and our faculty and staff are safe. And our reopening plan is working. You know, Kevin and Heather are talking about the growth they're seeing with NWEI scores. So the, the, the plan right now i- is working. Can it be better? Absolutely. And we continue to analyze and look at the plan to try to tweak things to make it better. Um, so that's where we're at. I want it to be fully upfront with everybody a- and put it out there. So, um, administrators, I don't know if there's anything else you would like to add to that conversation, but, um, or the board, you have questions for me at this time?
Yeah, I guess so. In regards to reopening, um, you've answered a lot of the questions. And first off, thank you to you and your staff and all, all of the staff, because you're doing a great job. And no one's questioning that. Um, so in comparing us to other schools, because that does come up, how come they can't and we can't? It's not always apples to apples is what I'm hearing. It's apples to oranges.
That's correct, yes.
So five days a week currently isn't possible due to the state regulations on opening, because we just can't do it, given our staff and the building.
Correct.
So the only option is getting creative with Wednesday. Is that right?
That's what we're looking at right now. We're analyzing that, yes.
And I'm glad to hear that that is in the discussions, because it sounds like that's the only thing you guys can do at the moment. So I, I'm, I'm glad to hear that Wednesdays are in the discussion.
Travis, I don't want it to sound like, uh, from what I'm getting, it's not something that they can do. It's something that they can look at. Um, so going back Wednesdays isn't, isn't a can-do from what I got from Bill. It is a, we are gonna look at it and see if we can make it work. That would be the only thing that they could make work, if possible. But it's not, it's not a definite go back on Wednesday.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the original reopening plan had middle school on Wednesdays. Is that right?
It, it did, yes. Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm clear on that. So, um, yeah, it's tough. I get it.
Yeah.
I have comments on another thing, but w- w- in the reopening part, if anyone else has anything to chime in on.
I, I just wanted to ask, are there, are there any inklings about what's coming in these new guidelines?
Well, I know that the superintendents in, across the nation have been pushing for the lessening of the six foot of social distancing. You know, the American Academy of Pediatrics has steadfast with three feet. And, you know, there's four feet, um, you know, and there's metrics out there about, you know, the rate of transmission within those. And, you know, i- if we could have three feet of social distancing, then we could possibly bring more kids back more days a week. Um, because then we would have the capacity to do that within each classroom and you would have the staffing. Um, and we're hopeful that the CDC, um, you know, falls in line with that. And then the department, the State Department of Health falls in line with the CDC. So there's many different barriers, or there's a trickle-down that has to happen for us to be able to, to relax that six foot of social distancing.
Is a hamper for us that we are one campus?
Um, we have shared staffing is really, um, a, a barrier and one campus. Yeah. There, there's, there's so many variables that go into, um, a, a reopening and trying to fit more kids in on a day-to-day basis. Because of shared staff, because of remote learning, because our teachers are doing remote and in-person at the same time. Um, there's just so many factors. It's just not an easy, yeah, we can bring kids back and we want to bring kids back. We all want to bring kids back. You know, that's.
You said there's upwards of a hundred fully virtual students?
Yeah, there's close to a hundred ver- fully virtual students, yes.
So the teachers are putting in a lot of work to accommodate both that and in-persons.
Absolutely, yes. Yep. Yep. Our teachers are, are burning the candle. They are, they are doing exceptional work.
Yeah, I agree.
What does the three-foot rule do for transportation and for moving kids around the building and hallways and, and lunches and all of that?
That would have, it would change everything. You know, it would change the transportation. You know, if they didn't have to be six foot, you could get more kids on a bus. Um, you could fit more kids in the cafeteria. You could move kids, uh, more freely in the hallways. Um, it may eliminate some satellite rooms, um, the need for satellite rooms.
Travis, um, I just wanted to address, too, I think the size of our classrooms, as simple as that is, but that's been a huge piece. So the, uh, you know, yeah, and, and we, we really do have some classrooms that are at maximum capacity rate at this moment in time. So having three foot would really, you know, increase the number of things that we could have in the rooms, so.
So, so can we be realistic about expectations and, and say, let's say magically, CDC comes out with guidelines tomorrow that alleviates many of those barriers for us, moves it from six feet to three feet. How long would it take to transition the plan and transition the staffing and transition families if magic happened?
Ellen, we need another set of magic, cause then we need New York State to also fall.
Well, that's what I mean. That's, I mean, that's part of, that's part of the magic. So, so if the CDC changes it and then New York State agree, I mean, that for the first time ever, New York State agreed with the CDC in less than twenty-four hours in the last day. Um, so, um, that was a much faster alignment than has ever happened before. But, but so, yes, okay. So, so CDC makes this decision, then we have to wait for New York to support it. So once New York supports that decision, I, I just want people to have realistic expectations. Cause I know I got phone calls three hours after the announcement about the difference in, in vaccine and quarantine. So you're gonna get phone calls within an hour. But so realistically, what do you think? I mean, days, weeks?
We, we would probably need a couple of weeks.
That's what I would expect, yeah.
Yeah, because we'd have to get the building back in order. Um, you know, we would have to have staffing, uh, realigned. Um, it, it's gonna take some time. And quite honestly, you're still gonna have families that are gonna elect to keep their children home. And we have to plan for how are we going to have more kids back in the building and continue to deliver remote instruction?
Yeah, I just, I just want to be realistic about that, that, you know, when that magic happens, it's not going to be Monday that we're going back to school.
Absolutely not, no.
And that's, and that's not for lack of planning or effort or trial, that's just.
Yep, it would take staff meetings and, and logistical meetings and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Along with that, Bill, could you talk a little bit about maybe if you know about how things are moving along in terms of staff getting vaccinated? And if that's helping with morale and, and the idea of like hopeful, you know, maybe some hopefulness on their part that. They would feel safer if we did move to a broader reopening?
Yeah, so vaccinations with the staff is moving along really well. Mooresville College had a clinic yesterday that, that opened up through Madison County Department of Health. We had a number of staff go over and get vaccinated. I, I want to say that we're close to 80% of our staff. Has either had their first vaccine or scheduled for their first vaccine.
Excellent. That's great.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's really helped morale, I think people are feeling more comfortable, safer. So I, I think that's trending in, in a positive direction.
Great. And then my other question, this kind of goes away a little bit from the reopening, go back to the exceptions. Hopefully coming down for testing or for assessment, for state assessments. Whatever people might think about the value of those assessments, they at least is provide some kind of a. A point, a point of evaluation of students' progress and how students are doing. I'm wondering if your, if you as administrators and, and, and staff feel. That there is in-house, a good enough and a robust enough system for assessing students. That you feel like we know where our students are at, even though we don't have those traditional state assessments at the end of the year.
I, I can say at the secondary. You know, being content area specialists and working with the regions exams as, as they have throughout the years and all the examples of, of past regions exam. Have, you know, I, I, I believe that they can formulate a final exam that would. Would reflective of what they were able to get through during the school year and of the students' progress with that material.
And just, so Cory, I think that was the really exciting part of our news yesterday too, is to really be able to have some of those, that data to show. Growth and then, you know, likewise to what Mark said, we also have former like examples of 3A assessments. That we can use in-house, so and I, I would expect that we would do things along those lines as well, because we really do want to see. Where, you know, where students are in comparison to a typical year, so we do have the materials available. As well, I think, you know, a lot of the hesitation on doing the 3A assessments is. Also, we have a group of remote students, we have a group of hybrid students, it's just, you know, as, as much as we've tried. And, and I honestly didn't know that it was the right thing to do at the time, but dedicating a feature to those remote students has, I think, been really effective. Even though, you know, I, I remember trying to create a plan and saying, I hope this is the, the way to go, but. It's still, it's still a little bit, and you know, there's inequity there because those students aren't having exactly the same experiences as their. Their, their in-school, so I think it would be difficult to administer the assessments. However, I think that we, I still want to know, you know, where all, what, it, those are really points. And we can use a lot of that data from those assessments to drive our instruction, to look at the curriculum that we're trying, you know, to make those decisions. And say, you know, where do we need to beef up our math program and, and ELA and pieces like that, so. I would think we should still use them. It just may be, you know, differ, different way of administering them and maybe for different end goals, but, yeah.
Thanks.
So Bill. On the piece you had about the programs with BOCES. I'm glad to hear this news regarding their expanding the range of their offerings, I myself benefited from a BOCES internship. So I'm very supportive of their programs. That being said, their offerings are growing and our enrollment, especially in the secondary, are slowly declining. So how difficult it, if all, if at all. Does this expansion of their programs make it for us to offer an array of in-house programs and classes? And does it potentially affect staffing?
We would have to look through our course signups, you know, when we do our elective fair and signups. It, it could have an effect on our in, in-person classes, our in-house classes. But we wouldn't know that until we do go through the course offerings and the signups of courses. I, I can't answer that at this time without, without going through that process.
Fair enough.
Bill, I would just add, I think that's a pretty limited amount of space for that CTE ninth grade program, I think. Think of what I heard was about 20 kids in the entire region that would be eligible, so. We get that, so I don't think it would have an immediate effect.
Yeah.
You know, you touched on athletics and I just think that. Speaking for myself anyway, I'm thankful for the Madison County Board of Health. I'm sure that everything's been very hard for them, agree with them or not, they've got a lot on their plate and I'm thankful for. Their recommendations and. Concerns and all that. That's all.
Do you have anything else for the superintendent's update portion?
Thank you, Bill.
Brings us to this, that brings us to the steering committee updates, Cory?
Yeah, so we met just yesterday, right, for our secondary steering. Continuing to work on putting together a survey that we can get out to, to alumni. And, and that's good. I think we'll, we'll hopefully get some good data from that, but we're trying to make sure it's. As good as possible before it goes out and also need to be. Very careful about making sure the data is secure and that we know we're, we're clear about what that data is going to be used for and how it's used before people start submitting their. Their personal information through that survey. The other exciting thing that's going on is students. I mean, one of the great things about being on steering committee is seeing the students who are on it. I mean, any interaction with an HCS student, I think, is always, it's always amazing how much they can do and. How, how much, how better equipped they are in life than I was at that age. But. Especially say Dora Ammerman has been putting together. A way to, to connect students to help tutor each other and help mentor each other, especially right now. While they're having a tough time and I'm impressed, very impressed with, with what she's doing there. And then finally, yesterday we talked about. Brainstorming some different ways that we could take advantage of the digi- the new digital signup front. What are some different things that we can get in there to help communication? And then when, you know, in the future, thinking about expanding that digital signage to, to inside the building. Specifically in the foyer, that was a pre-pandemic idea that we had, and so we're thinking, you know, now coming out of it, can we? Do something where there's some digital signage in the foyer and kind of linking those things up so that there's. You know, some information that you get on outside and then maybe more information you can get inside it. I think we got, had some, some good ideas there and hopefully. Chris can follow through and actually make that a reality, so we're, we were ambitious, I think, in the types of things we wanted.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Cory? Jen, I think, right? I always forget who's on which, sorry.
I know, it's like. So in the elementary report, several items that we discussed were already touched upon, so I won't repeat that again. One thing I do want to add though is. Are, are great things that our HCS students do and something was mentioned in there about an HCS alum, Maddie Merk. And I guess she and Heather, please jump in and give more specifics on this because my notes were really limited, but I was very intrigued by this. From what I understand, Maddie took it upon herself to create a virtual commune space. It was a project that she took on herself to help. The mental wellbeing of both adults and children that are going through this pandemic and crisis. And I just felt like that was. It was just very intriguing and very. I don't know, I warmed my heart that like one of our students would actually take upon something like that, and so again, it's just showing. Some great things that our alums are, are doing to just make the world a better place as well.
I'm so glad you brought that up, Jen, and just with everything going on, but I think it really, it was something that also fits in with her college major, so it's really neat for her to see also. Kind of where she came, where she's going and, you know, linking that back around together, so. And it's a wonderful resource, I have been known to use it myself, so. It's a great resource, if you haven't taken a look at it, it's been sent out and shared on the learning platforms in the elementary, so.
Thank you both. And that brings us to the PTO update, which I have. Some of this we already know, but I'm going to read, read as it was written. They had a meeting last week, the PTO is excited for the return of HCS Reads, this will be our third year and we have picked a fun book. The literacy program will start after February break for every student pre-K through five. They will all receive the book by. March 15th, when the title will be revealed. Last month, they were also able to provide eight new books to the library and classroom libraries from the proceeds from the book fair. They were also just organized a hot chocolate day at Dunkin' for all the teachers and staff as a way to say we appreciate them. And. They are also revamping their website with hopes to have it up and running by the end of the month. Have a sweet and healthy February, and that's submitted by Sheila, so. Thank them for submitting and for all the work that they do in supporting our school. Takes us to the Emma Foundation, which again is an update from me, they went over their financials, they did not have any applications to review for this month. They're willing and able to help out if there's anything that needs to. Be helped with, they understand that this year is different and that a lot of people aren't asking for things because of the way. The pandemic has changed life, but they are there and if you have something for them, go ahead and submit for it.
Looking out to them as we discuss summer school, we will.
Okay.
We will be soliciting some funding for summer school.
Wonderful, I did pass that along to them so that they have the heads up on it. So that's wonderful, so thank you. That brings us to knowledge sharing, we did have some. Jen had something and I had something as well. Jen, I'll let you take it over first, how's that?
I was going to say mine kind of runs into the NISP advocacy sharing as well, so if you want to go first and then we can just combine mine there.
That sounds good, so I sent everybody on the board and Bill an ebook that I read. It's nine big questions, schools must answer to avoid going back to normal. Not saying that we can't return to some things, but. That we should take this opportunity to really process. What we need to go back to and, you know, I, I've been thinking about that a lot personally as well and in my workplace as well. Life is going to be different. Whenever things do change and we're able to do things in person again. So this is the opportunity to, you know. Take a few minutes to think about what, what things have been, you know, at my work, what are the silver linings we've talked about, you know? What are the silver linings of the pandemic and what are those things that we can carry on to our, to our new future, right? Instead of going back to normal, what does our new future look like? And I think that's the way we need to think of things as we, as we move forward, that we're not going back. We don't need to go back, we need to go forward. And there are some things that we will take with us. But there's also some things that we can change and this is our chance to. And so I found the reading really good and I've passed it on to everybody to look at, you don't have to read it, but I did think it was worth the time to read. So then now it's your turn.
Okay, so I had the privilege, I was able to. Take a half a day off work and attend the 2021 Capitol Conference. Sorry, of cour- Mercedes just decided to print from upstairs right now, so sorry. So it was, there was a lot of really great speakers, it was super, super informative and there's so many times. I just wanted to like message things out. And my notes, I think I have like 20 something pages of notes, so obviously I will not read through all of them. I did create a Google Drive folder with some of the PowerPoints and handouts. That we got that I would definitely encourage everyone to just take a quick look at. And there was a really big focus on the mental health of our students, that got brought up by many of the speakers. And I guess I can call our commissioner Rosa now spoke for quite a bit on focusing the. Focusing on the whole child, not just the academic component. And she was stating about how to make our kids ready for the future and, you know, they. Don't need to just be academically ready, but they need to be physically and mentally ready as well. And she had a big focus on wellness, so I'm curious to see. What could happen now that she's in that position permanently in some of those cognitive components that she had talked about? She talked a lot too about closing the gap. And again, not just on learning, but also on wellness and the. Benefits that are available to all, all kids in that area as well. There, there was a speaker from the governor's office, that was rather interesting. There was so much of it and you, you could kind of just feel a lot of other people, there was a lot of excuses for a lot of things and. He basically just kept reinforcing that the state isn't cutting funds, they're replacing them all by federal funds. Which I thought like that was just something I wanted to mention here because I thought that that comment was rather interesting. They talked a lot about the inner, internet hardships that were happening. And he did mention too that the state's focus right now is looking at immediate need and that. They are too busy focusing on that to discuss long-term need at this time. So basically he had stated the governor's office is just going to, I quoted this. They're going to see where things land and then address them. Was the quote that he said, so yeah, that made me want to like bang my head, so just. We all know it, but I guess there we heard it from a representative. There was a lot of talk again about like the internet infrastructure and how that they were. How the state is actually calculating who has access and who doesn't. So within an area, if just one home has broadband access, they're considering that entire area to have it. So again, super inequitable. They touched base a little bit on the school budget and election voting costs and basically said like the state's aware of the challenges. And they're looking to address it and to stay tuned. So and then the, the big thing that I just wanted to address everyone to, and this is, this is like the board, the administrators and the public. But especially us as administrators and board members, NISP has an action center. And I don't know if anyone's looked at that, but they post things on there pretty regularly. And they had suggested to like even add something on your calendar to check in on that every couple of weeks. They have really great outlines. To different advocacy actions that you can take and they've made all of the documents. So they've given you a template, but then they've made it editable. And they encourage you to really like edit it and make it personal to your home district. But they have a really great start with that and then they also encouraged us for, to share that link with the community. So. That's something I think we should do more of, especially within our district, we have a lot of challenges. So I thought that was really great and then I also found out that. Within that Action Center, Danielle Grasso, she can actually run reports for our district, so we can actually see. Danielle Grasso, she can actually run reports for our district. So we can actually see how many people sent in on a certain topic so that we can find out too what's most important to people within our district. So I thought that that could be really. Kevin, I'm a bit of a data nerd too. So I thought that that could be really good data that we could have to, to actually see what our constituency groups are interested in. And then they mentioned that a resolution survey would be going out to all NISBA members on March 1st. So they've encouraged, they encourage us to bring that back, mention that and to, to really like complete that and look it over and submit that. And then the last thing I'll bring out is the, the closing remarks was a speaker. She's the youth governor from Albany High School. Her name is Zar Abdul. Amazing student. She, if anyone left that without, you know, some tears in their eyes from listening to her, just an intelligent, very, very intelligent young woman. So again, it was a day full of a lot of information and very fortunate that I could attend that.
Very fortunate that you were willing and able to as well. That's wonderful. Thanks, Jen. Anybody have any questions for Jen?
I think, I think you're right, Jen. That Action Center seems like a great place to start. I'm wondering if we could coordinate with the PTO on, on coordinating some of those, those efforts among people in the district.
That's a really great idea. I think, and I mean, and I'm on that site and in, you know, on the site and in that section a lot and I didn't even dig deep enough. Like something else was just posted, I think it was today or yesterday regarding some of the broadband and things, which I know. And I have a perfect example of that, you know, with, we, it's, it's an issue in our area. So there's a lot of things on there that, super helpful templates.
Hey Jen, now that you are our NISBA advocacy person, have you gotten a feel for what kind of things HCS doesn't necessarily want to advocate for that other districts would?
I haven't honestly dug really deep. I really wanted to start with this conference to kind of get my feet wet and see what some of the legislators and things, you know, senators and people are saying. And it was definitely interesting to hear different speakers from different offices. And the one thing that I did take away and I was, I screamed a couple of times. The, the thing that seemed very consistent to me was a lot of people recognize the issues. But I think what we need to advocate for more than anything is getting them to take action on those issues. Because all of them can sit there and say, oh yeah, this is an issue. This is an issue. But you didn't hear any of them say, this is what I'm going to do to fix this issue. So that's, it was actually really frustrating at times like, ah. But it's something I definitely, and, and they did state within that Action Center, not to just go through and fill it all out because they're all there. Like really look at it and you know, make it personal to your district and your district's issues. And if it doesn't apply, don't fill it out just to fill it out.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Now that brings us to Matt. Budget time.
Thank you. Jen, that's good stuff. It sounds like the equivalent of spending a day in the business office during budget time. I definitely feel your pain and the frustration. Just to kind of piggyback off that a little bit, you know, with regard to the budget and next year's planning. Since, since the last time we met in January, the, the governor did release his executive budget proposal for 2021, 22. And as usual, there are many nuances that are very strange. There are a lot more questions than there are answers. And as Jen alluded to, right now, there's heavy dependence on federal stimulus monies. The current executive run is based on $6 billion coming from the federal government with hopes of getting as much as 15 billion. The problem with that, regardless of whether it's 6 billion or 15 billion, that doesn't change the state budget deficit that currently exists. And, you know, I'm, I didn't go back and look, but my guess is if we went back and looked at last March's board meeting, before the pandemic truly hit, I was probably telling you that the budget outlook wasn't good and that the state had a significant deficit. So, you know, unfortunately, this is starting to shape up like 2010, 11 all over again, when the gap elimination adjustment was implemented. This is what happens when the state has a significant budget deficit. They make adjustments in local aid and even so much that on the governor's run, they've picked a new acronym. It'll be instead of the GEA and the gap elimination adjustment, there's a, there's a line this year or on the current executive proposal, it's the LDFA, the Local District Funding Adjustment. So basically what it appears is going to happen is that school aid is going to be reduced by the amount that's received and allocated in federal stimulus money. So that's great in the short term as far as potentially keeping us whole or providing us with maybe even minor increases on a year-to-year basis. But once that federal stimulus money is gone, if you remember those years from 10, 11 through 16, 17 or 15, 16, every year you get into that battle. Do we increase foundation aid? Do we eliminate the GEA? It looks like we're heading towards something similar. A couple of other things that were odd, you know, the governor has always sort of targeted expense-driven aids like BOSI's aid and transportation aid. In his proposal, he's eliminating those as individual aid categories and combining them into one, one pool known as services aid. And then moving forward, that amount, base amount would be indexed in future years. So you know, the way school districts have done business for years in terms of driving aid through certain expenses through BOSI's or through transportation would really go away. It'd be combined and then there'd be some sort of index moving forward. The other thing that the governor is, is, it's really perplexing is he's included star reimbursements on district state aid runs. Star reimbursement amount. So as a taxpayer, when you have an assessment reduction and now you either get that star benefit through your tax bill or you get the refund check depending on when you registered. That money is all reimbursed to the, to the school district and that's always been recorded as and treated as a real property item, not state aid from the state. The, the star amount for the districts is now appearing on the aid run. So there's something, some that think that the governor is trying to somehow alter or change star. Others think that it's a way to, to, to boost what appears to be some sort of maintenance of effort at the state level to satisfy some sort of federal requirement to somehow drive more federally. We don't really know. So like I said, more questions than answers, a lot of head banging as Jen alluded to. And really sort of wait and see what happens in the next few weeks and as the legislature goes into session and they come up with a budget. So the other big, big piece of the budget process that's upon us is our tax cap calculation. That's due to New York State, March 1st. We're, we're pretty much there as far as our calculation. We need to just tie up a few loose ends with our new debt service that's coming out of the capital project. This is not good news across the state. The, the old 2% tax cap, which is actually the lesser of 2% in the statewide CPI increase for the prior year. That number for New York State is 1.23%. So that is the baseline by which all school districts are starting. We have no changes in pilots. There's no exemption for retirement contributions. We do have a slight local growth, growth factor for new property in the district. And then we have a little bit of new debt service coming out of the capital project. With all that factored in, it is looking like our allowable tax levy increase within the confines of the tax cap is going to be about 1.6%. Which I think you're going to see throughout the state. You're going to see many districts that are below 2% based off of that 1.23% as a baseline. So that really hinders our ability to, to raise revenue through the tax levy. And again, with the, with the uncertainty of the state budget, a lot more to come. The, the last thing and I, you know, I could go on and on, but I won't. I think it'd be best suited for us to schedule a couple of budget workshops, coffees, workshops, whatever you want to call them. Typically we do the first ones on or around March 1st. So Bill and I have looked at our calendars. I'm going to throw out a date in a couple of times. We'll stick to the, to the general practice of doing one in the morning and one in the evening, hopefully draw more people. But one of the, the date that we've targeted is Tuesday, March 2nd, 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. There is, Bill, you might have to help me here. There, I know there's a meeting that evening from 5:00 to 6:00. It's, I don't know if it's steering committee.
No, we have our parent council meeting at 5:00.
Parent council meeting at 5:00. If we, if we do a budget meeting at 6:00, that may be a good time to do that, to, to, to draw people in. But I think, I think by then we may know more, we'll certainly know more here and be more prepared to present on where we stand and what we're looking at. And we should probably dedicate some time specifically to budget conversation. So I don't know if anybody has, by doing the two separate meetings like that too, I think we can kind of split up the board and do multiple meetings. But that, that's.
You don't need us, you don't need us all at both of these, correct?
No, it'll be the same format, same meeting. We, we just do them at two different times of the day to hopefully be accommodating to people's schedules.
March 2nd, I can make both work. So whatever anybody else can do, great, but. Tuesday, the 2nd.
Tuesday, March 2nd.
I can make either of those times work as well.
I didn't get that Travis.
I said, are you hoping for more than five people?
Yeah, I am. We'll be prepared for as many.
Hoping for more than the five board members is what you're saying.
Thanks, Matt.
Matt, you'll send us the, you'll send us that when you confirm.
You know, if it doesn't work, we can, we can do another one, especially if we're doing them virtually. I mean, it's not, I mean, these are the, whoa, I just hit my chair release. Yeah, we can do, we can, we can do as many as you'd like. We'll start with that. Thank you.
Reminder that the board petitions are available on the website. I did just go on. I found them pretty easily. It's under the board tab. So it's petitions, you can download it there. Those are due, says March 19th, I think it's April 19th.
March, March 19th is the deadline to submit a petition for something to be placed on the ballot. So typically our friends at the public library and then we have our bus proposition.
Oh, I was reading it wrong. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
It is April 19th.
April 19th for the board petition. So if you want to run for the board and join our wonderful team, go ahead and do that.
Whose terms are up this year?
Just mine.
Just Cory.
Okay, I totally lost track.
Debbie, have they, do you know, have you heard any things of a safe way to do signatures that doesn't involve standing next to somebody and making them touch your pen?
No, and Cory, that's, that's actually, you know, I'm glad you brought that up. With regard to the process, we, there's been nothing issued in terms of the vote and how the budget vote process will be run. As you know, last year was, I know, I know two people that are in this, in this meeting right now that are hoping that we don't have to do it like we did last year. So we'll see what happens though. I, I mean, I'm optimistic that by then we'll be able to figure out a way to do it in person, you know, as, as was done in the fall. So, but we have not gotten any guidance yet on, on how the vote will be.
Cory, and as for the, as for the petition, one way we could think about it for somebody, I could email you the petition. You could print it off, sign it, send a picture of it back to me. Then I can email that picture to Ellen. She could print it off, sign it. You know, you could, you could try to do something to that effect. Where you would get the physical signatures, but.
Yeah, I wonder if that's.
Yeah, Cory, I'll look into it. I can, I, I, there may be, be a way to do some sort of electronic petition. That's something that I'd be happy to look into.
Debbie and Matt, on that, don't you normally have to have a certain amount of percentage from the previous year's vote for your petition? And since last year was an anomaly with so many voters, does that change things with the amount of signatures needed? Just out of curiosity. Doesn't the amount of signatures go by a percentage of the previous year's vote?
It does. And typically it's anywhere from 25 to 30 signatures, but because last year was so different. Again, we have to wait and see what they say, how we have to, how many we have to take or how many you would have to get for a signature.
Yeah, because you're talking a major increase in how the signature is needed.
Right. We can get back to you as soon as we hear something. We haven't gotten anything.
Yeah, I mean, have fun.
And it'll be listed, like it'll say right on the petition when I can revise it when we do get something. Right now I've got it, just the typical 30 signatures.
Thank you. That takes us to the annual meeting for ML BOSI's is Wednesday, April 14th at 6:00 PM. It is virtual. If everybody could make sure that that's on their calendar. I don't think it's online, but I'll put it on there later. So please make sure you have that. And that moves us to a discussion about the possibility of returning to in-person board meetings. Travis, you asked for this to go on the agenda, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, and I'll try to be real quick. So I'd like to suggest that we go back to in-person meetings like we were having in the fall. I think it's important to hold in-person meetings if we're telling staff and students that the school is a safe place to be. I think it's hard for us to team build as a board virtually as well. And I don't know how you guys feel. I just think that the time is right. And also Bill, would you be okay with us returning to in-person Board of Education meetings at this time? If we decided we'd like to?
If that's what the board's decision is to be, we'll accommodate.
So I'll leave it at that. That's what I'm thinking. And I wanted to know what you guys thought.
Well, I think the suggestion last time was that, not that any of us had a problem meeting in person so much as if we are doing anything that brings any risk to the school by being additional vectors than to be accounted for, or we're requiring extra cleaning or extra setup. So I agree with you. I'm, if, if in-person meetings could be more efficient or prove to anybody that we, we are willing to go to the school as we are asking staff and students to do. I'm happy to do it. But if there's, to me, any chance that what we are doing by doing that, we are putting in jeopardy or costing somebody creating more work needlessly, then it's, it's not worth it. As much as if you're going to ask me after what we're at, three hours and 10 minutes of staring at us at a Zoom call or a Google meet, like right now, more than any, I don't want to be looking at a screen. But if it's something that's keeping the school safe, but I think maybe, and I defer to Ellen and others who have maybe more expertise on that.
Before we go to expertise, Ellen, hold on a second. I, I don't know what you have to add on that, but I, I don't see the value add right now. The value add to me is when we can go back and have Kevin and Mark and Heather and the community in the room with us. And when we were at a meeting in the fall, I didn't feel the value add and I felt that I did feel that we were adding more work to the district by having to rearrange the library and having to clean the library and rearrange it after our meetings and get all the technology set up and potentially, you know, having our. and get all the technology set up and potentially, you know, having our germs in there. Because we don't go in the school. I don't go in the school to pick up my sons. So to me, I don't see the value add. I'm fine and I will go back. But if, but I, but I just don't see the value add in it. So I'll let Ellen and Jen take a turn.
I, I don't have a lot more to say except to actually say that if we're going to, I mean, I, I think it's good to have everybody's thoughts and opinions out here, but at the end of the day, what's happening a month from now and what's happening right now could be night and day. And I'd just be inclined to wait more until the moment. And again, we've got several days before the meeting to make that decision, but, but yeah, I, I tend to agree about. I don't feel like the five of us sitting in the library with Bill added a lot to the, to the value and, and the quality of the meeting. And so, but again, I also want to be attentive to the fact that what's going on now and what's going on in March may be very, very different. It may be much, much better or it may be much, much worse. And so, you know, I guess at the end of the day, I'm not ready to, to commit to anything at the moment. So.
Jen, thoughts?
And I think my thoughts mimic that of Cory's is, you know, obviously I'm, I'm ready to go back. However, I also don't want to create unnecessary work. Like you said, just the technology setup has got to not be super fun sometimes. I do think that there, I, I've really missed that connection amongst all of us. And like Cory said, it's really hard to, after you're sitting on Zoom calls all day, you've been sitting at a desk all day. Now I've been sitting at a desk, literally came home to get on. It's really exhausting. I think that there's more value in it, possibly in an executive session setting, which then piggyback, I think there's several times this year that I felt an exec session, I, it could benefit a lot more being in that same space. But I don't know. I am kind of, you know, with Ellen too of like that it's changing day by day. So we could say something today that could be totally different tomorrow.
And I, to add to that, we are now, the meetings would overlap, but it seems like with practices that are happening later into the night to the, so now it's not just that we're in the building where before we were in the building where nobody else was in the building. And now there are other people in the building as well. So that's an additional factor. And then finally, I think we've had a lot of community input on how the plan is reopened and how the school has been reopening and sports and getting kids back in the classes. I haven't heard anything that anybody cares when or how we meet. And I could be wrong. And if there's people in the community who feel like how we're meeting makes us symbolic or, or real gesture about what the district's doing, I'd be happy to hear from them. But to be honest, I don't think many people care how we meet or know that we meet.
That's fair enough. You know, I wanted to see how you guys all feel and, you know, everyone has their own opinion of things and that's great. And I understand why you guys feel the way you feel. Debbie, are you there?
I am.
I would like something duly noted in the minutes, if you don't mind.
Well, wait, okay, hold on. Go.
I have requested that Board of Education meetings return to in-person in the same fashion they were being held in the fall. That's all.
Yeah, Matt, I'm just going to repeat it back to you just a minute.
Yep.
Okay, Travis, it was duly noted. I requested BOE meetings in person in the same fashion as in the fall.
Yeah, that, close enough.
I'll, I'll just put other words in there and I'll call you tomorrow. I'll make sure that's.
Yeah, if you'd like, I can send you an email or something and, but yeah.
Yeah, it's fine. And we'll talk tomorrow to make sure it's down what you wanted.
You got it. And thank you to everyone else too for having that discussion. It is really helpful. I just felt it was an important discussion to have.
Thanks for bringing it up. We have community participation. I'm not sure if the people that have put their questions in are still on. We went from 50-ish people online watching to now we're down at 23, 24. It just went to 24. That's why I changed my number. So I will start here and I'm just going to read each one as they're written. Sarah Furlong, is HCS considering adjusting the schedule in the spring at all if COVID numbers continue to drop? I do feel that we have answered that. So I'm, and I see Bill's head shaking, so we are going to move on. I'm going, that's how I'm going to kind of go through them. If somebody disagrees and thinks we need to talk about it more, please speak up. The next one is, what does HCS need from the Board of Health in order to move forward with competitive play of high-risk sports? Some other Section 3 Madison County schools have decided to play. I don't think we've answered that one fully. Do we?
We would be the recommendation that high-risk sports are safe at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next one, the criteria in the guidelines published by Madison County Department of Health were met, but yet Madison County Board of Health made a strong recommendation to hold off for another month. What criteria will be used in a month?
I, I think the department, I can't speak for the Board of Health, what criteria they're looking at. I would guess it's infection rates. I would guess it's transmission within schools. And I do know that they're meeting next week and not within, they're not waiting for another month.
Great, thanks. Ms. Reynolds mentioned.
I wanted to, sorry, I want to follow up on something there, just because, and I hung up instead of unmuting. Bill, is this, can you talk a little bit more about this statement that some Madison County school, Section 3 schools have returned to competitive sports?
Some Section 3 schools have. Madison County schools have not. I, I take that back. The only school within Madison County that has returned is DeRider. And they are, they're bordering three different counties. So they're in a bit of a different situation. Every other Madison County school is not participating. They're following the recommendations of the Department Board of Health to not engage in high-risk sports at this time. And they're doing in-house as Lauren has been working with their athletic directors.
And those, and so with the majority of Madison County schools, we're coordinating our efforts and response?
Yes.
Okay.
Bill, what kind of legal liabilities would not following the Madison County Board of Health's recommendations?
Travis, some schools have reached out to their school attorneys and they have, their school attorneys have strongly advised them not to go against the recommendation for liability issues.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Reynolds mentioned three pods for, I think gym time is what this was referring to. Will there be any basketball offering for modified players? And I do believe we answered that with the answer no, correct Lauren?
At this time, no. They, they have had clinics going forward. I just don't see how gym space would work out. We, when we did the offerings, the, the boys' interest was maybe four kids. So that's why there never was a boys' open gym run. And that's why it's only been the girls.
Okay, thank you.
There are some middle school players playing on the JV though, right?
Yes. So that's separate. So they'd be on the JV pod. They're asking if there'd be, I think, specific pods for modified, added into it.
Okay, um, good. Yes, okay. Madison County did approve high-risk sports. If they did not change the recommendation, or sorry, if they do not change the recommendation, will Hamilton consider an independent decision on sports considering other schools have decided to play?
I'm not in a position to answer that at this time. There's so many variables that, that need to be considered. The entire school being, staying open for in-person instruction. There's just too many variables for me to answer that at this time.
Thank you. Could we consider longer hours or hiring more staff to reopen the school more? I believe we answered that, but Bill?
Yeah, I answered that. Contractually, we have contractual obligations about extending the day and the hiring of staff. We have budgetary implications that that would affect that we just did not budget for.
Great. We did have a student that asked, please let us play and then thanked us. So I wanted to make sure that we acknowledged the student for that. We had a few people thank those that are retiring and tell them that they love them. I'm not going to read each one of those. Thank you. I will read one though. Thank you to our retirees. You are the reason that HCS is what it is. Then the spectrophotometer was in there. Hold on a sec. I so appreciate you letting the kids have Valentine's Day. So sorry for so many comments. I've really moved by everything everybody is doing. Next one is, we are grateful for Ms. Doddard's creativity in keeping the kids active in gym. Thank you, Ms. Doddard. And that brings us to the end. Are there any other comments? I was hoping that while I read all those, others would add any comments at the time. While we wait to see if anybody else is going to write anything, Bill, there will be no voting after exec session, correct?
That is correct.
Just gotten in a good habit of making sure we state that. I see nothing else coming on the screen. I thank all those for watching, for sticking with us for a long time tonight. A very important meeting. We covered a lot of really wonderful topics and the student presentation, hats off to them again for all the work they've done, for being on our meeting and being so professional as young individuals. I need a motion to adjourn for executive session to discuss matters regarding the employment history of particular individuals.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chris, go ahead and turn off the link.
So we'll need Kevin, Heather and Mark to stay.